I'd like to call to order the regular formal meeting, the August 7th, regular formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council. That is August 7th, 2018. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Here.
Ms. here. Sollee.
Yeah.
Taylor.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Throg Morton.
Here. Item two, consider adoption of the consent calendar as presented or amended. We're going to pull item 2D9 for separate consideration. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Cole, seconded by Sollee. Discussion. I think someone in the audience wanted to comment on item 2E9, which is the Community Police Review Board's proposed revisions to ordinance 8-8. Yeah, please.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name is David Selmer. I am one of the board members for the Chicago, or the Citizens Police Review Board. And we have a proposal before and it changed ordinance 8-8.
David, could you please make sure you're speaking into the microphone?
Sure. Is that better?
Yeah.
All right. Again, my name is David Selmer, and I'm a member of the CPRB, as we like to call it. And we have a proposal before you to adopt an ordinance change to 8-8. Essentially, what the board role is, just as a refresher for anybody watching at home, is that we review complaints made by the citizens here and determine whether or not we believe they should be sustained or not sustained. The police chief is already filling out a report, has completed a report before we do our reviews. A concern for the members of the board was that there was no communication really between the chief and the members of the board after such a complaint was made. We would do our investigation and whether we sustained or did not sustain, it just kind of went somewhere for eventually to come out in the public record, but that there was no substantive discussion between the chief primarily. There was a chance for a name clearing, kind of investigation hearing with the officers, but a lot of times for legal reasons, we can understand that they would not participate in that. As a consequence, the consensus of the board was largely that there was an opportunity lost perhaps, and a chance for us to have a substantive conversation with said officers or the chief was being forfeited. That's what we're seeking to change more than anything in this proposal. We are asking that if there is disagreement between the board's findings and the findings of the chief of police, that we would be able to have a substantive conversation with him in advance of any releasing of a report in public record. I think that would allow us to come to some kind of consensus hopefully, and also perhaps have a little bit more persuasion either over our own opinion or the chief's opinion and reach some kind of agreement. In the event that agreement is not reached, we propose that we also be allowed at that time to, and this would be the board, to ask for another independent investigation at that time. And that too would be substantive report. The idea of that is essentially where would be a two-party majority, so to speak, or two-part opinion that would be as part of the record rather than just the board's opinion and the chief's opinion, someone coming in from a third-party independent opinion to kind of set a tiebreaker for the record, so to speak. And again, that would be after a private meeting with the chief when a consensus could not be made. We think this is a good step. We think it's a really good time to be working with the chief. We've really had a great relationship with him, and he's excited, I think, to start having an independent conversation with us on some of these cases as well, so.
Good deal. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Just for clarity here, we're not voting on that proposed ordinance changes, in that proposed ordinance change. We're not voting on that tonight. We will have to have some follow-up discussion about it. So I'm sure the board will be invited to participate in that, and we'll have to hear from the chief of police and other key staff people, right? So thanks for the work that you do and all the other members of the board, and for presenting this to us.
Thank you for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions in the future if it comes up. Thanks.
Okay. Do you want to?
I had just a minor correction under 2A2, the July 17th work session, under the section clarification of agenda items. I was talking about some correspondence regarding the transit study, and in the last sentence it mentions that Mayor Throg Morton had questions concerning the timeline for study and if it would include seats transportation system. And that, I believe, after clarification also with Mayor Throg Morton, that was myself, Mayor Protem Taylor, that brought that issue up or that question up, raised that question. So just a minor change on that. Thank you.
Okey-dokey. Any other comment or any other discussion? Eric Non, roll call, please.
Ms. yes. Sollee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throg Morton.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 2D9, Housing Trust Fund Contribution. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding with the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County for the contribution and use of $500,000 for affordable housing. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
Selmer.
Second.
Moved by Sollee, seconded by Thomas. Discussion. Maz, I think you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I really would like, Simon, if you can come up and tell us about the data that I asked you for.
Yeah, as Simon's loading that up, appreciate council member Sollee gave us a heads-up that she was going to have some questions, so Simon and Tracy have prepared a little bit of overview of the, how the funds that have been dedicated to the Housing Trust Fund have been used over the last couple of years, and then that'll inform your vote tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. So this is the information for grants that were obligated by the Housing Trust Fund for the last two fiscal years. So this is just the contributions that the city made in fiscal year 17 and 18. In fiscal year 17, it was $500,000 to the Housing Trust Fund, and that came out of the million-dollar contribution from the rise. In fiscal year 18, we contributed $325,000 of general fund money to the Housing Trust Fund. In both cases, it was half of the amount that went into the Affordable Housing Fund for that fiscal year. Just as a reminder how we landed on the distribution formula for the Affordable Housing Fund, this was a recommendation initially made by staff and then vetted through the Housing and Community Development Commission. They did tweak it slightly, is my recollection, but the breakdown of the Affordable Housing Fund is such, half of it would go to the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County. There are some stipulations on that funding, that the projects must be within Iowa City, and that they must adhere to the affordable, the affordable housing location model that's updated annually. So those are the two strings we attached to it, that we did not require that they were loans. The county money that goes into the Housing Trust Fund is required to be loaned, so that is different between the two sources of money. The other portions of the Affordable Housing Fund were that 25% would be held for land banking, 20% for low-income housing tax credit support, as recommended. That is also vetted through the HCDC for recommendations for council for that funding. And then 5% reserved for emergent situations. This was being structured at the time of the Rose Oaks discussion, and that was what was in mind when that was reserved. Anything not used for emergent situations is then reverted to land banking for the next fiscal year.
Simon, you're off one slide on your presentation there. Okay. There you go.
And so this is the breakdown of the funding from the last two fiscal years. These are the grants done by the Housing Trust Fund. The contribution is essentially prorated, so the column on the right is the Iowa City contribution. These projects in general were much more expensive than what we funded. The Housing Trust Fund also contributed $1.3 million of non-city funds to these same projects, which would have come from the state and/or the county. And loan repayments for the projects that were loans rather than grants will then be funneled back into the Housing Trust Fund to fund future projects. The first bullet point there, the low-income housing tax credit match, there was a loan of $800,000 for a project in Riverfront Crossings. That project was a $6.8 million project overall. So that just gives you some idea of the amount of outside dollars that can be leveraged through the trust fund. The trust fund with the current Iowa Finance Authority scoring mechanism for Lytec projects is how you achieve the local match. So if we had contributed city dollars the last two years directly from the city and not gone through the trust fund, they would not have received points for the local match for those dollars. And frequently, that's the difference as to whether those are approved for funding or not. Seventy-two of the 91 units assisted the last two years serve families with maximum income of 60% of the area median income. And Tracy Haichu and Tracy Akemba could probably speak to this better than I, but when there's a maximum AMI assigned to a project, frequently those projects serve families that are at a much lower income than those levels. For instance, the Invest Health Healthy Homes Initiative, that had a cap of 80% of AMI, but I understand that families served by that program are almost exclusively at or below 30% of AMI. And five of the projects targeted in this table, five of those 19 units targeted at 80% of AMI were for homeownership options. So those were two, the Habitat Homes, and then three in the Saddle Brook area, down payment assistance for those homes. And it's really difficult for homeownership to go much below 80% of AMI before the homeowner can no longer service the debt on those, on those homes. So that's a summary of what we've done the last two years as the Housing Trust Fund, and where the city's dollars went for those projects. And happy to answer any questions. Tracy Akemba is in the audience, as well as Neighborhood and Development Services staff that can answer any questions as well.
Would you please share that PowerPoint presentation with us by email or some?
Absolutely.
Some such device. Any questions for Simon?
Yeah, I just see that you're saying that in general, the Housing Trust Fund being like, serving the household under 60% in income. Really, I pulled this out from the consent agenda because I would like really to reduce the cap of 80% to 60%. We are doing it anyway, and I know Tracy, you know, from the Housing Trust Fund, she was doing really great job. I read her letter that she sent it earlier in the year, and I like everything that you guys do, but my understanding, she's leaving, right? You are leaving the Housing Trust Fund, and I don't know who's coming. I want to secure the 60% solid. You are doing it anyway. Why should we put the 80%? Let's do 60%, and they are doing it anyway, and it will be the 60% for the person, next person who coming. I don't know what their vision is, but I want to see that the city money for specific, for this project specifically, to be at 60% of the area median income.
And I don't think that that would be problematic from the trust fund's perspective. The only thing that I would note is that for Lytec projects, frequently the scoring requires a mix of incomes and units and some market rate units, as long as we weren't boxing ourselves into not being able to support those projects. That'd be my only comment on that.
And I'm talking about only this project. We have another project where we do 80% too, but just for this project.
Well, ordinarily, on a proposal to change some policy or practice that we have, we have some work discussion about it, and we're certainly not in a position to make a decision tonight based on your recommendation. So, I mean, it's not a bad recommendation, but we're not in a position to make a decision on it tonight.
What you mean by you are not in position? Are there something legal I can do, or I cannot do that, or you need more information? Tell me more about this.
The only piece I wanted more information on was the impact on affordable housing owner-occupied. I mean, that was something that I think, I think I would want to support, and it seems like we would need to have it up there. So that's a piece that does concern me with the proposal. Unless people indicate that under 60%, we can still do some owner-occupied at that level, but it seemed like there was a pragmatic limit there.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable changing this without more information and more discussion. I want to really have a better understanding of the ramifications, because I think, as Simon just alluded to, if people are less than 80% of AMI, it's unlikely that they could be in a homeownership program, because they probably can't service the mortgage and taxes and insurance and everything else. So if we limit ours to 60, then any of our money will not be able to be all used for homeownership. I'm not sure that's a restriction that I want to have with this money, so.
I get that.
I'm not saying I'm totally against it. I'm just not willing to make a change on the fly without giving it more consideration and having more information.
I get that's exactly what I meant. People cannot own a house because that, and we need to subsidize them.
But you can't. I mean, I, I'm sorry. I am not willing, I don't think every person can afford a house. That's just a fact. And I think if somebody at 60% of AMI basically cannot, if the people out there working in the affordable housing industry look at these numbers and crunch these and say, "It is not realistic to fund somebody for homeownership when their income is lower than 80% of AMI", I think that's something we need to really look at and talk about before we say, "We're going to give those people more and more money simply so they can own a house." It may be much more productive and efficient use of our money to help them with rent than it is for ownership. So again, I need more information and really to digest this more before I'm ready to consider any changes.
How many, like, homeownership you, like, have done by the Housing Trust Fund for Iowa City since this program established?
Of the projects you see on the screen here, five of them were for homeownership.
Like during this, and the rest of them are renting?
Right.
I guess I'd rather have people have more housing, like the 60% income, like median income than even like ownership, homeownership. If you are in 80% area median income, you are way far from 60% and from 30% or even 40 and 30%. That's why I still insist that we continue to 60%. We have another programs that is 80%.
And I'm sorry, I should clarify really quick. Five of the homes in the 80% line are homeownership opportunities. There were some rehab projects that were existing homes that fell at lower, yep, fell at lower AMI.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, Maz, I think you're raising a policy question that deserves separate consideration. We cannot do that without providing advance notice. So what we have before us is a motion with regard to a particular, how's the right term to use here? Particular allocation of funding to the Housing Trust Fund. That's the question before us. If you want to have a broader policy discussion about whether funding should be limited to households at or below 60% of area median income, then we needed to get on our work session agenda and have a discussion focused on that.
I guess we're not, because now you are approving $500 to go to the Housing Trust Fund. I mean, what I want, this $500 to use for like 60%, I want them to be attached to it. Are we approving it and discussing, we're going to discuss it later, or how this will work?
The resolution that is on the floor has the 80% in it, as does the agreement that's attached to it. So if you vote on that tonight, it'll be 80%. You can make a motion to amend to 60% and see if you have support from the council to do that, and then move forward on it. You can also make a motion to defer until you have your policy discussion. I don't know if there are timing implications or what, you know, that that would have to be addressed by others.
Can we ask Tracy a call? She's nodding her that there might be timing implications.
Tracy? What, Tracy Haichu, which one?
Tracy Akemba.
Calling all Tracys.
It might be both of us.
Good evening.
Good evening. I have to admit, I didn't come prepared with my spreadsheet of numbers and all of that. What was the question again?
Is there a time, if we were to defer this, is there a time issue for allocation of this money?
Well, I guess it depends on how long you're going to defer it, because we did plan to, if we had the funding, we would be making it available for any projects that are tax credit projects that are coming up. And those pre-apps are due to IFA by November 1st, so we were planning to make funding available that would be, applications would be due September 20th. So it gets a little tighter.
Would a deferral until the next council meeting, I think we're set for the 17th, correct?
Yeah.
Would that be a significant delay?
21st.
21st, I'm sorry.
21st.
Tracy Haichu's coming.
Yeah.
We were planning on doing a joint allocation round for Lytec credits, because you reserve 20% of the Affordable Housing Fund for Lytec projects. The only concern I have about going to 60% is the Lytec application is based on the qualified allocation plan by IFA, the Iowa Finance Authority. So if developers can achieve a higher score, because it all goes by score about how you, if you're successful application, they will have a mix, and developers will utilize that mix to get the highest number of points possible. So if you limit that they can only apply for units below 60%, you might be harming their application, because IFA will set that, that allocation mix. And like I said, developers will try to maximize their score and follow whatever gets them the most points.
Yeah. If I can jump into that real quick, because we had a side discussion Monday when the initial concerns were brought up, and I think you'd be comfortable exempting the Lytec projects out, knowing that those are unique and they, they do require a mix of some 80%, but clearly the majority of those units assisted would be 80. So as we have to think about, if you want to change the resolution here, we'd have to figure out some way to exempt those Lytec projects, and I think that was something you were okay with.
Well, it seems to me we could defer for two weeks, come back with further information about that particular point, and if there's, and we have a little, maybe we could have a little more clarity about what specifically is being recommended and why. And it's hard to make a decision on this, on the spur of the moment, you know, sitting up here and without some advanced warning, some heads-up about it. So I think what we need is a motion to defer to August the 21st.
So moved.
We have the other motion on the floor, though, so is this like amending that motion, or do we have to vote?
Just a motion to defer takes precedence over.
Okay. Could I have a motion to defer to the 21st?
That was.
So moved.
All right. Moved by Cole, seconded by Ms. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to community comment, this is for items that are not on the formal meeting agenda. Anyone who wants to address the city council on any item that's not already on the formal meeting agenda should feel free to come up to the podium. Please state your name and speak about whatever's on your mind for not more than five minutes, and we'll go from there. I'd like to welcome our scouts as well. I mean, I don't know what troop you're from or anything like that, but it's great to see all of you. Okay. Anybody want to address this? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Martha Witcher, and I'm here today to talk to you about Housing Code 17519A.
Martha, can you please make sure you're talking into that microphone? Thank you.
I said I'm here to talk to you today about Housing Code 17519A, and what it says is duplexes require permanent separation between units. I'm proposing that a possibility that you could reassess this code and/or grandfather in some of the houses that have been told that they need to do that. My situation succinctly is I have two historic homes on College Street, and they've been in my family for 60 years, and they've been, it was meticulously changed over from a single-family gorgeous home to a duplex in about 1960, and it's been meticulously maintained despite what's happened in the neighborhood, including wrecker balls coming in and knocking down Victorian homes. My parents made sure that the two houses they had were pristine, and they still are. I've had them for about 15 years, and my children and myself, we work our fingers to the bone to keep those houses looking good and keep tenants in it that are, appreciate the historic. What they've told me is that I need to take out beautiful oak pocket doors, sliding doors, and I need to put in a permanent wall. And I need to take out two doors that separate the upstairs from the downstairs, and it's a curved staircase in the back, and put in permanent walls. It completely changes the entire feel and look of these beautiful homes. And I'd like to think that maybe there's a way that some of, I don't understand the reason for it, I think is the bottom line. I have a letter and pictures that I was going to email you all, and I realized I don't really understand why it's being enforced, especially now on my houses. You want the letter and the pictures? I can email it also, but.
Sure.
Yeah.
Your house is on College Street, is that what you said?
Uh-huh, yeah.
Yeah, what's the address again?
It's 816, has been my family home. I haven't lived there, but I'm in and out for the last 30 years. But the one, 824, is the actual rental, and that's the one. They're mere images of each other.
Okay. Thank you, Martha. We're not in a position to really kind of discuss how to respond, but Tracy, Jeff, I'm sure you can contact Martha, maybe Tracy, maybe you can get her contact information, and explore the situation with her. Make sure she understands why we adopted that particular code provision, and if there's, if there are exceptions, make sure she knows of them, and so on. So would you please follow up on that?
Right here. I don't have a phone number, I'll just write on it. Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Martha. Hi, Brandon. Oh, it's raining.
Hello, Brandon Ross from Iowa City. I just would like to call attention to something that's very visible, which is there's a lot of construction around town. We all know this, but how much, how much of what is being built, what's the percentage of affordability? That means that working-class people can actually afford to live there. I would say that the, in Iowa City, the majority of people here are working-class. That is, they work for a living. That means that they are working, they are not collecting rents, they are not collecting dividends. Only 15% of all people generally, nationally, actually get dividends from stocks, and only about 5% of those make much difference. I know that in the Chauncey Swan Building, which, which is one of our favorite projects that we've talked about here over the years, the Chauncey Swan Building is, what, about 60 units? And I think the city did step in after the, after it was proposed and got some of those units to be affordable. I think somewhere along the lines of six, but please correct me if I'm wrong. But it just seems to me that one-tenth affordability for working-class people and 90% unaffordable is a bad equation. And I would like to know, what is the equation for affordability? Where can you get four, $500, $600 apartments, as people are making $7, $10, maybe $12, $14? You know, what is the percentage that's considered good? And who should live in the city? People who are working-class, they need amenities. They need stores, they need libraries, they need, they need everything that basically the downtown actually offers, and they can't afford to live outside the city, because then they need extra transportation, then they're in the middle of, you know, places where there are not stores and things like that, especially families. And I'm wondering if, so I guess I would pose to those of you cool and groovy people up there on the city council, can I say that again? Cool and groovy people up in city council, the cameraman laughed, but none of you did. But I would say that if there is a numbering system where you have, how many people should have, I mean, how much affordability should there be? And how much should be unaffordable? Should we have 90% unaffordable housing? Newspaper people back there, people of the press, stop the presses. Should we have 90% unaffordability? It's a, it's a, it's basically a dead end. It's a, it's a, it's basically a dead end. And I'm wondering if, if we could have more language about this. We feel like we're actually in a, we're being occupied. Not the occupiers of Wall Street, but by the developers. Everything from the center of town, everything is being destroyed and then rebuilt up. But how many people can actually afford to live there? I've talked with the architect, I've talked with builders, I've talked with people working. None of the people working can actually afford to live in those buildings. And then I would say, I would put a caveat at the end of this and say, is it possible that the city can do some types of creative things, considering that you are cool and groovy and creative people, some of you here for a longer time, to get back some of the buildings that have already paid back themselves and offer the landlords, say, I don't know, Clark, you know, who has lots of holdings, get buildings and get people who can afford to be in those buildings, give him something else maybe, you know, say, hey, you want something out here, we can do something here. That's the way you have to have affordability, because if you don't have people who can live in the central parts, it's not affordable. And I hate to say it, you know, you look at San Francisco, one of you actually lived in San Francisco, you know, it's a disaster. And we are building in the same model. I'm not accusing this particular council, I love all you cool and groovy people. But, you know, but I think we can do way better, be more creative with affordable housing. And I don't mean strange, weird, odd, frightening things. I'm just saying, you know, places, if we're going to build, you have to build for people, not for investors, not for people who are going to live there a half a year. You know, that whole thing about they have to live there a half a year, that's a joke. What are they doing the other half of the year? You know, people, real people need to live 12 months, the real people. Thank you so much for entertaining me.
Thank you Brandon. It's great to see a cool and groovy guy coming up. Anyone else want to address us on any topic not on the formal meeting agenda? Okay, seeing no one else, we're going to turn to item four, planning and zoning matters.
Sorry, can we get a motion to accept that correspondence that was handed in?
Of course, yes. Could I have a motion to accept that correspondence, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Salee. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item four, planning and zoning matters. Item four A, rezoning east of South Gilbert and west of Sandusky Drive. This is an ordinance, conditionally rezoning approximately 18.03 acres of property located east of South Gilbert Street and west of Sandusky Drive from interim development multifamily residential IDRM zone to planned development overlay low-density single-family residential OPDRS5 zone and planned development overlay low-density multifamily residential OPD12 RM12 zone. All right, I'm going to open a public hearing. Would anybody like to address this topic? All right, seeing no one, the applicant has requested deferral to August the 21st. So I'd like to have a motion to continue and defer first consideration to August the 21st.
So moved. Second.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Salee. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four B, rezoning between Burlington and Court Street.
And we also need a motion for correspondence.
Oh, was there correspondence?
So moved.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry. Moved by MEMS, seconded by.
Second.
Salee. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All in favor, all opposed say aye. Hearing none, motion carries. Item four B, rezoning between Burlington and Court Street, Pentecost Garden Apartments. This is an ordinance, conditionally rezoning approximately 3.41 acres from high-density multifamily residential RM44 zone to riverfront crossings, south downtown sub-district RFCSD zone located at 12 East Court Street. I'm going to open the public hearing. Would anybody like to address this topic?
Mayor, if I could, really quick, I just want to call your attention to two items in the packet. One is a memo that you requested from staff that summarizes our conversations with the University of Iowa on this proposal. And that also addresses one other council question that we had received. And then the applicant has also placed some additional information in your packet, and I presume they would like an opportunity tonight to walk you through that.
So, Rob, you're going to do that, right?
Yeah. You have the actual packet in there?
It's the same as what you submitted, it's there. If you'd like to use it, you can escape out of this and zoom in if you need to.
Thank you. I'm Rob Decker, I'm the owner's representative, project manager for the development group at 12 East Court Street. Thanks for letting us speak further on the topic. I wanted to primarily, I don't want to go through the whole packet for you because it's extensive, intentionally so. I wanted to provide you, we wanted to provide you as much information as we could. We know there's a, there's a lot of information requested, a lot of, a lot of things involved in such a, such a large-scale project. So we did our best to put together a synopsis, tried to categorize it into a sensible kind of walkthrough. It's supposed to pull elements from the master plan, which you're all familiar with, and the Form-Based Code, which you're all familiar with. So there's snapshots of those in there, things that many of you are already familiar with, but just to kind of place them in there in the appropriate spot so that you can reference them a little more quickly than thumbing through those large documents as well. I just want to go through and provide a couple of highlights to that. I'm happy to address, you know, try to keep my comments short so that if anybody else wants to speak, they can. But I'll try to highlight a couple of the salient points in there that I know that are important to all of you. And then I actually have a synopsis I'd like to read. I don't really like to read from something, I'd rather just kind of do it off the cuff, but I do, I would like to read, it's very short at the end, and then I'll be here for any, any questions if you guys have those, if that sounds okay. You know, so hopefully you, you got a chance to go through this. But the supplemental information, and we tried to get it over in enough time that you'd have about a week to look at as well, so hopefully, hopefully you did. But the, with the supplemental information, in regards to affordable housing, which I know is a topic just, just addressed recently as well, a few minutes ago, this would put, the project as proposed would put something in the order of 100 additional affordable units on the marketplace, which I think is, you're going to be hard-pressed to find something that's going to induce that much volume into the market, especially in such a, such an applicable area, right downtown, essentially in the heart of campus. Also, all the parking would be on-site, I know we've addressed that previously, but the intention as designed with the, with 15-story units would be that all the parking would be compartmentalized on-site. We would determine if that would be in multiple structures or one homogeneous structure, but it can be done regardless either way. And then with that, you know, within the master plan, I know that John had mentioned that the master plan, we're all aware that the master plan shows five, four to nine stories in that particular area. It also specifically addresses that area that additional height is available and encouraged if parking is contained and contiguous on-site. So I draw your attention to that element as well. Lastly, kind of in regards to those same issues, I was going to pull up a couple of the pictures if you want to have those up when we're, when we're discussing, I'm assuming you'll want to discuss. In regards to that specific area and the 3D renderings that are done within the master plan that was created in 2013, the, in this super block, as they call it, or this SD4 sub-district of the south downtown area, the, there are a lot of variations within that block that I would call to your attention. The point being that I would interpret, and I think many people would interpret, the master plan as a guide. I think that's what it's meant as, and then the codification of that in the Form-Based Code is the attempt to implement those rules of that guide. The point being that I think that to use the master plan as gospel and say you have to do that, first of all, hasn't been done to this point, particularly in the super block. If you look at what the 15-story structures are, I think I have that in here. I don't have the master plan page of that in here, you can certainly get it, but let me see what I've got here.
I don't think you do, Rob.
No, I have it on my own thumb drive. So the, on the Clinton, you know, just how we're standing now, but on the Clinton and Burlington corner, there is a 15-story structure shown wrapping that corner on Burlington Street, all the way down to the Hilton Garden Inn. That's not being constructed, we have a seven-story, I believe, Extended Stay Hotel going there. The building down at the bottom of the hill, which is known as 316 Madison, is shown as a four-to-five-story structure, was billed as an eight-story structure, was approved as a 15-story structure. These are structures on either side of the, of the facility that we're discussing, and the school of music is also shown as about a four-to-five-story structure. If you look at on that rendering, it is about, that one is a little more difficult to quantify, but if you look at what the actual elevation of it is, it's about a nine-to-10-story structure. The point being, I'm not trying to parse through all those individual pieces, but all of those vary from what the master plan shows from that super block significantly in some cases. And I think that what's important on that side is to evaluate the project as it is, on its own merits, and what does it bring? And that's what we're all here to discuss and what you guys have been doing a great job of discussing to date. The, the statement I wanted to read to you is just really trying to kind of fine-tune everything into a pretty, pretty succinct statement, which is, you know, our focus as a development team is really twofold, and I broke that into the building, the focus of our team for the building is to maximize the site to its full potential, something that most people want to do on a development. Create an amenity that fits in to this very unique space that you're all familiar with, provides benefits to both the owner, the city, and the occupants, so that everyone can benefit from this. While maintaining the tenants of the master plan as well as we can, as well as meeting the Form-Based Code requirements. High-quality construction, professionally designed and locally built, student living experience, which I know is important to everyone, including students, professionally managed and secured, and 100% on-site parking, as I mentioned. The second approach in specifics to the site, to reconstruct the Capitol Street to, what would be the new Capitol Street extension to urban city of Iowa City standards, working with, closely with city staff, engineering staff, planning staff, to provide enhancements to that south downtown sub-district in ways that I would argue cannot be done on any other site and won't be done if this project doesn't go through in one form or another. Enhance traffic, public transit, axial views, things that are all important within the master plan, things that are very unique just specifically to that site. Streetscape and green gathering spaces. Axial views that I just mentioned to the old Capitol, I would also argue that opening that street up compared to what's there now, if you go out, I know Jim, you've been out there a number of times, what actually opens up the view is you head south off of Burlington to the old Capitol, or, I'm sorry, to the Johnson County Courthouse. And we believe that that would, would enhance that view in many ways. Within the packet that I provided for you, we did, we photo-documented all around the site, there were many more than that, but I tried to kind of parse that down to ones that would, that would make sense to you. There are already views, the views of, of the site, particularly, if you're standing on the north side of the site, looking across the Pentecost Garden Apartments on the top picture, the views to the, of the Johnson County Courthouse are already, that's the primary view that's going to be blocked by a new project, and I would argue that's not a very appealing view as it is. I would actually argue that the, the new view would be significantly better, but that's just my opinion. The, as I mentioned, the, the, I'm sorry, I lost my place when I looked up at the picture. The primary gateway and increased accessibility to the central crossings and the park sub-districts, which if you aren't familiar with those, those are the next two riverfront crossings districts to the south. I think that opening this gateway would actually facilitate those developing. The city carton site, which is a site that's of a lot of interest to a lot of people right now, is going to be a critical part of sort of the corner, corner piece of that park sub-district where that riverfront crossings park is going to extend up north towards us in that picture, expand out onto the riverfront. And I think that this is going to help facilitate that development as that corridor extends down and increases the accessibility, both in terms of transit, you know, pedestrians, bikes, every, all, all that kind of stuff. The, and providing valuable city land right-of-way transfer that's otherwise, you know, the city's not going to have a lot, we all are aware of this, right? But Capitol Street isn't just, a section of city roadway isn't just going to get transferred back to the city every day. And obviously, I think that is a, that is a critical part of this piece in the, in the give and take, and it makes it so appealing as a, as a project, that there's, there's something for the city to gain. In addition to all of the obvious things, the taxable revenue and increasing the quality of the construction on that site, the student, the student experience that can be had on that site right adjacent to campus, you know, it's also going to transfer that into what I think can be a really nice streetscape, similar to the Clinton Street one. So wrapping up, you know, we heard what you guys have said, and we appreciate you, you, you know, moving this through a number of meetings and allowing us to talk. And we've tried to provide more information, work with you to get you information that's specifically tailored to what you, you know, additional things that you're wanting to see, thoughts that we have. Sometimes they weren't thoughts that we had thought through, have gotten together and worked through those and tried to, tried to provide those to the best of our ability. We've adjusted from the original intent, as you guys know, the first time I was up here in May, of two buildings, back to four. I would argue that I think three is a little safer, we can get into those if we're able to rezone and go, but that's because of a connectivity into what I would consider kind of a, a maintenance drive behind the, the school of music, and one of the courtyards kind of opens into that. There are some renderings, I believe they're in your packet, that, where we showed, I think we did, yeah, so that bottom one. That would be if, if the connectivity went through the whole way. And that wouldn't.
So Rob, what's, where are we looking at? The bottom image, where are we looking at?
So you're looking through, you're looking east to west through there, is what you're looking at. You're looking, you're looking towards east. I think that's the Hilton Garden Inn, all the way on the right, all the way at the end in the yellow. And it's not, that's not to be, to say that you can't do that, but it, but we, there'd be, have to be some things that were thought through in terms of just leading pedestrians out into that sort of alleyway, right? It's also an alleyway on this side, but that leads to the Wellness Center, the University of Iowa Wellness Center. I think that's a much more sensible and appealing pathway to lead through there. We've worked to convey additional significant green space, obviously that's a huge part of it. But a variegated frontage of the buildings would be another way that we would do it, to, to allow us to, to pull back off the required setback, which I believe is, is pretty tight through there, to, to vary the frontages of those buildings, kind of expand it out in addition to these green spaces, add additional green space along Capitol Street and enhance that streetscape, as well as what we've mentioned before, up on some of these setbacks and other little kind of kickouts in the buildings to have green space there. If you're familiar with the site now, it's heavily, heavily surface parking, all of that would go underneath, and that could be replaced with high-quality structure and green gathering spaces. I think that really enhances the site. Lastly, almost done here. We've met with a number of local groups as well, I think all, all of you or most of you are aware of that. I believe some of them may want to talk tonight. I know that some of you have met with the University of Iowa, we have twice. They had expressed no concerns about the height of the building and no concerns about the proximity to the Music Building. They want the, their keys are, they want the buildings to be of a high quality, they want them to cater to the student, student experience, not surprising coming from the university. And not, there's, there's nothing wrong with that, but those are things I would have expected. But just a reiteration of what is important to them, so things that are going to be important to us too, if you want to get tenants in there. And I don't think anyone's going to do a project of this scale if they don't think they can, then those are going to be things that have to be taken care of. And lastly, as you all know, we're just trying to get this through rezoning so we can provide a project profile to you, and we want to get into those discussions. And there's a lot here, all the stuff I've gone through today, where we go through and discuss the items, you know, in terms of height bonus. Jim, you provided a breakdown, I know, I think the packet's back here, of the, of the items that we can, that we can do. There's many of them, there's many arrows that we can put in our quiver. I don't want to, again, get into the, to. I don't want to, again, get into the details of that. You may discuss that tonight, but we want to get to that phase where we can all work through what we're proposing for an actual project, provide the things that we're willing to do, that we're willing to not do, get into that give-and-take for that Capitol Street, some of those transfers and all of that good stuff, go back to P&amp;Z, come back to you, and really parse out what that project's going to look like.
Thanks, Rob.
You bet.
Does anybody...
Do you want me to stay up here?
Hang around for a second. Any questions for Rob?
A few questions. You know, we've had a lot of discussions about height, and it's my understanding that there are a lot of structural and engineering standards that kick in at a certain level. I think it's, what is it, five stories above, where you have a lot of the engineering standards that are very expensive to do. Have you gotten into at what floor you need to get to before you even break even? I mean, because I'd imagine with the height, there's a certain level. I know with the potential conditions that have been discussed, at least among us, you know, we've talked about 12 stories, for example. I mean, have you been able to sort of give me, get an assessment as to that?
You know, I don't know. I can tell you that our team hasn't discussed that yet. You know, I don't know if the, I'm sure there is some point, you know, kind of, so going back a little bit to your, yeah, you know, we like to say in the industry, you're going to kick into steel and glass, you know, you're going to go, you're all, I mean, there's one being built right next door, you know, we're all used to that sort of timber-framed or hybrid, you know, hybrid podium with some timber above it, very common construction method in the Midwest. Yeah, your costs go up exponentially as you get above a certain level. The, you know, the codes, the various codes, IBC and many other codes talk about when you have to kick things around and switch over. I don't know that there's specifics as to where that sort of sweet spot is. I honestly don't know. You know, I think that is, I think that could be a discussion for this next step, you know, is where, as we start to talk about, you know, height bonuses and things like that. I think that's a great thing to discuss.
Any other questions for Rob? Thank you. Does anyone else like to address this topic? Good evening, Bill.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm Bill Gerhardt. Live in Iowa City. I'm the President of Iowa State Building Trades. I've been here before, talking about some of the same issues I'll talk about tonight. In theory, I think we need to go up and not out. I think we have a moral obligation not to encourage urban sprawl. Within the next generation, there's going to be 10 billion people on this earth that need to be fed, and we're going to be surrounded by single-family housing that used to be some of the best cropland in the world. So, I think if there's a demand to go up, we should go up. Two, I think by going up, more units means the market, there'll be more apartments on the market. That'll probably drive rent down. That'll help the affordability. Third, I think that as, this looks like a great project, a lot of units, I'm sure that's going to help our tax base, and there's a lot of things we can do with that tax money in Iowa City here. So, at this point, I'm in full support of this. It's good to know that you've reached out to groups in Iowa City. I would suggest or recommend maybe you talk to the Local Building Trades Council. Those are the people that do the construction here, and maybe we can avoid some of the issues we had on the RISE. The RISE is a great project on the surface, but we had countless labor issues, including misclassification, wage theft, safety issues, a large part of the workforce coming from states and points south. So, I would recommend that you reach out, and I'm sure they'd be willing to be partners in this with you. But I like this project. It's a great project. We'll finally get rid of those ice shores that are down there now, and we'll get Capitol Street back. And for those people that were here when we had Capitol Street, it was a glorious view coming up from the south on Capitol Street and seeing the old Capitol. So, I look forward to having that back. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
I guess I have a question for Rob again. I'm sorry if I don't pronounce your name right. You talked about affordable housing, like 10%, which is almost 100 maybe unit, as you said. Maybe this is too early to ask, but if you have answered, that's okay. If not, that's fine. Are you planning to have this 10% on-site, or are you planning to do fee-in-law or both?
On-site.
On-site?
Yep. And we have talked to the local building trades. We have started those discussions just addressing the previous, and that's important to us as well, so.
Okay, great.
But, yeah, it's planned to be on-site.
Thanks.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor, council, I'm Nancy Byrd. I'm the Executive Director of the Iowa City Downtown District. Thank you for an inviting comment. We have, as a board of directors, met with Jeff Clark. He came to our last, he came to our last board meeting to have a discussion with our stakeholders and our board members. We've also met with our Legislative Committee. We have a very thoughtful committee that is really interested in the balance of all of these different interests that this project might bring. This project itself is outside of our district boundaries, and yet it's still, all of our stakeholders agree that this is a very important project that we need to weigh on, so that's why I'm here tonight. Other business owners, a couple of cultural venues were interested in coming tonight, and then they reminded me that's what they're paying me for, so here I am. I hope that you found the letter that we sent to City Council on behalf of this project. We had several authors work on this, and I think at the end, it kind of expresses a pretty good balance of how the Downtown District, the Board of Directors and leadership of the organization feels about the rezone. So, tonight is really about that rezone, and the master plan for the area has a process in place that we feel hasn't, we haven't been able to have a really, really robust conversation around this until the rezone is triggered. So, tonight, I'm here to generally support, on behalf of the Downtown District, the request of 12 Court Street from one zone to the Riverfront Crossing Zone, and to allow the rezone process to trigger all of the other design elements that the developer can jump forward into. And right now, there's so many unknowns that it's hard to have a really good conversation until we know what that design is. Mayor, thank you for your letter. We read the letter. We push it out to our organization and our members, and there are a lot of commonalities that our district members are interested in, as well as it sounds like council. As you likely know, the Downtown District membership generally, and this isn't true of everybody, but is not height adverse, we're more interested in how the building frontage and the building face meets the sidewalk and the street, and even the parking, and how all those, that interface works, so that the pedestrian environment is very rich. So, that's the element, I think, that we had a lot of conversations about, that this project, if designed well, can achieve those things. And oftentimes, you don't always look up to even see the height of the building, or you wouldn't even notice it. But if the street level, if the retail level is done well, the project can be successful and help mitigate for those height impacts that some people are concerned about. Secondly, I think this is a, it might be premature, because I know this is the second level. Once you get into the rezone, if the project is rezoned, but the management plan is so critical, and we have seen a new project with the RISE have a robust management plan, and the management plan there seems to be working. And our interaction with Rob Anderson at the RISE has been phenomenal, and their support of local businesses. We have our magazines, our retail guides in every single room there. They're looking at local concierge of downtown venues and retail businesses to support the students at that project. And oftentimes, people don't, they don't have to do that. They can say, you know, if you're looking for services, this is how you get it online, and they can push to a more national tenant. And that project has not chosen to do so, so I think it's sort of a model for what this can be. And we think that that management plan is really critical to make sure that it's clean, and it's safe, and it's so close to downtown that this is, this is an asset, not a liability. So, in the future, we hope that that's something that we can be a part of and discussing. We also think the public benefits of this project are quite remarkable. Opening up that vista and regaining the street is something that would meet the University of Iowa goals, as well as the Downtown District goals, with respect of pedestrian mobility, vehicular mobility. It just allows for a finer-grain block, and those big blocks are a challenge. The finer-grain the block, the better it is, I think, for mobility in the area, as well as the generation of tax dollars is significant. There's just a number of things within this, including the affordable housing, that I think we're very fortunate to have this kind of development come forward in the City of Iowa City. It's not happening in other places, so it's not something that I think anyone should take lightly. Being clear with the communications of the developer, and I think that perhaps the deferral of this conversation is part of that, but that recognizing that and hoping that the rezone moves forward, because that's what we're advocating for in the future, that if everyone's very clear with the developers, they will attempt to meet the mark of what's in the code. And I think we've got good community partners that are here on board to do that. They can't do that until the rezone has occurred. And last, this is something that I know is outside of what the existing process is. I've had a couple of conversations with Wendy Ford. She also is the ex-officio on our board, about how the Downtown District can be more involved in the design process in the future. We do have, we do have a number of individuals that are, that really want to stay very closely involved in this, recognizing how close it is to downtown, and bringing students close to downtown is an important University of Iowa goal. For the Downtown District, our primary goal above this is really to bring more community, long-term community members closer into downtown to help support a balance in the market. We have a lot of pizza, beer, and coffee. The closer in the students are, which is a good thing for the university, sometimes makes it more challenging for us to provide retail that meets the entire community's needs, because the pressure downtown for those kinds of things becomes more challenging for us to hold the space. So, that's a conversation that we'll want to have in the future about how these projects come to bear and what kind of spaces they're offering at the ground level, whether it needs to be retail, or should it be office, or whether or not we can have a discussion with the developer about what those, what the needs of the larger area is for downtown Iowa City. So, with that, I appreciate your consideration of these comments, and we hope that we can encourage the rezone to occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else?
Hi, Ryan.
Good evening. I was just scrolling through all these photos. Ryan Hall, I am a student at the university and an environmental planning major. So, I know, moving forward, there's going to be a lot more talk about design, about sort of how it's all going to shake out, and I would just want to raise one concern about this effect on the climate the construction itself will have and the building itself will have through its lifetime. We want to be very conscientious of our climate action plan with regards to this project, and if we want to really build, similarly, like having labor be at, you know, the helm of these sort of constructions, we also need to develop a strong local labor force that is mindful of energy-efficient, near-net-zero, if not net-zero, buildings. And I think that this could be an amazing model if we move forward with that sort of concept. And so, you know, this is near and dear to myself in my studies, but also, you know, as someone who's going to adopt all of the mess that y'all have done. Not the you, y'all, but like the all of us. I did it, too. I gave up my car like seven years ago, though, so I think I'm doing okay. But I just wanted to throw that out in the atmosphere, and I also wanted to sort of touch on the sort of, the possibility of the 5% workforce housing. I just wanted maybe some clarification on if there was like the height bonus, if that 5% was in, was on the table, because I think it's really crucial that students of various incomes and backgrounds are able to access housing where they need to. The university historically has taken a backseat on housing, and that's why a lot of it is getting eaten up by the private market. But if we have something that is collaborative with the University of City and the Clarks and the developers, then I think we can all achieve some sort of common goal. But we do need to be mindful of who will enter these units and at what price. The university is starved of resources because Des Moines is killing us through state appropriations, and we've had to send, our student makeup is changing from Iowan base to suburban Chicago and a large foreign student population who have the sort of means to be able to afford luxury units. And I think this is an overwhelming concern, not just here in Iowa City, but in Ames and college towns all throughout the state, is that, you know, when our public education is compromised, we have to build and construct towards where the market is going. And if the market's going to continue going where it is, then, you know, we're going to drive nearly every Iowan student out of the state, and that is not something that any of us really want to do. So, I would just, I wanted some clarification on the workforce housing, because I think it's crucial for even a student's well-being in, within the community and within the university, to not just have just a sort of insular exposure and experience in Iowa City, because it's so much more grand than just the campus, than just the university. And to be able to sort of be in community with people who are of a different income background is crucial to all of our development and well-being. So, I wanted the workforce clarification. I really would encourage you, the affordable housing requirement, correct me if I'm wrong, is it going to sunset after 10 years?
No.
Yes. That is a huge concern of mine. The...
Sunset 20, I thought.
Sunsetting mean, the affordable housing requirement, the 10% of the units are going to be affordable, but only for a 10-year time period. And so, afterwards, when we're all hurrah about affordable housing, after those 10 years expire, then the landlord will be able to revert them back to market rates, which, who knows where they will be at that time. So, I really want to, and this needs to be in conversation with the developer, with the council, with the university, is that if we are catering towards an affordable market, we need to ensure that these units are not just here in the interim, but here to stay, because we want stability, we want, you know, concrete sort of understanding about where housing is and where it's going, and in the event of the 10%, up to 100 units could be taken off of that affordable requirement. And in a similar vein, I want to be conscious that, correct me if I'm wrong, it's at, the affordable housing requirement is at 60% of median income. Is that right?
It's 60.
60? And still, for a person who is a less-than-15-dollar minimum wage earner, that is still not in their ballpark. I want to be mindful, and I recognize that these are the sort of goalposts that the developer has, you know, come into, but the 10 years concern me, and also the 60% concerns me, because it doesn't hit the highest need of those who are cost-burdened by housing. But we're going to have more time to talk about this, and, you know, I'd be happy to pick y'all's brain and suggest some things about maybe some climate and design and affordability. But workforce, housing requirement, 60%, climate change. Sound good?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Hi. You know that you can't be talking about a project that contains this many potentially affordable units without having a visit from me, Sarah Barron, from the Executive Director of the Affordable Housing Coalition. A couple of things that I want to expound on that we talked a little bit about last time. 100 affordable units is outstanding. We certainly know that the need far exceeds that, and this is a big step forward in meeting the number of affordable units. We want to add more, a little more nuance to that conversation. So, we know who needs affordable units, and we want to make sure that the affordable units that we're providing match that need. In this case, you're looking at units that will be really attractive to some folks and really not a preferred option for other folks. And so, we just really want your help and the developers' help in identifying who will actually qualify to live in these units. For example, if you're claimed as a dependent on your parents' tax return and their income exceeds that 60%, this isn't going to be a unit that's going to be available to you. And I've checked with Tracy about this to make sure that you all are requiring that people meet those kind of federal housing guidelines for income assistance programs. So, they're going to be subject to those same requirements. So, just making sure that when we're thinking about who will live in these units, that we're able to find folks who want to live in them, that they meet their need for affordability, and that that's a shared understanding before we embark on this project, and later we get to a point where, you know, who knows, that they're empty, because we're not finding the people who meet all the different things. So, to just really think through that in a more nuanced way. But we're very excited, we continue to be very excited about all the opportunities that this Riverfront Crossing zoning provides for affordable housing development, and it continues to be a strong collaboration among... continues to be a strong collaboration among developers and city staff and other folks to, to make this both a financial practicality and also a step forward for the community. So, thanks.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Karen Cubby. And there are a couple of things that I wanted to comment on. One is just this larger process issue. And it seems like because council's concerned about making a decision because you don't know the details, but it's not unfair to have the developer have all the details on the front end before you make a decision, makes me want to revise the process somehow, that somehow these two things are balanced a little bit more, especially as we're trying to encourage more dense development, and these projects are more complicated, and all the issues of walkability, of height, of density, of affordable housing come together, they're, they're not going to get easier. And so I know, well, I believe that you all are kind of looking at revisiting, how does this process go? But if the process isn't working for the council, for the community, or the developer, then it's worth taking another look at it. I'm very happy that the, when there's a tenfold increase in units on a property where people, young people are congregated, young people who may not have lived on their own before, there's lots of things that can happen. And so I'm really happy that there must be an onsite management plan, and that it, the, that it has to be enforceable, although I don't really know what that means. I don't know what the enforcement mechanisms are. I do think that the Clarks do not need to start from scratch. There are people all over the country in university communities who have done dense housing and probably, I hope, have successful, robust management plans, and that there are communities who those developments are in who have good enforcement mechanisms. To me, I would, probably the ultimate enforcement mechanism is rental permits, pulling rental permits if, if, if the plan isn't being managed well. And that would be a pretty motivating enforcement mechanism. And I've been thinking about this affordable housing thing, because at the, at first I was thinking, well, the, the conditional zoning agreement has units onsite and/or a fee in lieu of. And we heard tonight that the plan is to all be onsite, so I'm thinking, well, then the conditional zoning agreement should say that, so that pledge is codified. But in thinking about the 10-year sunset, it might be a great idea to have some of those units onsite, so that there are these units close in, where there is great walkability, there's lots of jobs, there is public transportation, there aren't amenities for people who need and want to live in affordable housing. And then another, the other 50%, if it's a fee in lieu of, then the community has a little more power over a longer-term form of affordable housing with some of those funds. So part of me was like, it's got to be in the CZA 100%, but I really think that it would be great to have some onsite and some in a fund. And there was some suggestion at a meeting I was at, that some of the, I don't know if the money in lieu, the fee in lieu of has to be spent in that area or in the core, but there was a suggestion that it should be spent on the north side to revamp some homes that have been split up as apartments. With that trickle-around theory that some of those homes that are now rentals and split up into many units, some of those folks move into these larger facilities, and then those homes could be returned to be duplexes with permanent or non-permanent homes, or into single-family homes that are part of university or some other affordable housing project. So that was an intriguing thought to me. So I think some kind of balance of onsite and money to set aside so that it's long-term affordability, it sounds very attractive to me. So thanks for trying to figure all this out for us.
Thank you, Karen. Who's next?
All right, I don't see anybody else. We have a two-step process here tonight, from this point on, at least potentially two steps. The first is to consider a motion to continue the public hearing and defer first consideration to probably our next meeting. And that motion would have to do with regard to whether we want to attach any further conditions to the conditional zoning agreement. And if we end up agreeing that we want to attach some conditions, that would have to be discussed with the developer, and it would take a little bit of time to do that, because the developer would have to sign the conditional zoning agreement for it to take effect. If we choose not to do that, we will close the public hearing and give, have a motion to consider first consideration of the proposed rezoning. So potentially a two-step process. At least that's the way I understand it, from reading this, right, owner? Okay. So...
And I would just add, if you do proceed to first consideration, it will be the ordinance conditioned by the signed conditional zoning agreement.
Right. Okay, so could I have a motion to continue the public hearing and defer first consideration to August the 21st?
So moved.
By Thomas. Second, by Taylor. So we have a motion on the floor. So many of you know that I circulated, shared with the developer, shared with the council, and have tried to make available to the public a memorandum. It's dated June the 28th, which lays out a series of proposed additional conditions for the, for the, for the rezoning. So I want to go through them a little bit, and I want to find out whether there are four people who support at least some of those conditions. So before going into that, though, I'd like to say, when we first started considering this proposed rezoning back on May 1, we had very, very little information about what the developer was proposing to do. And I, for one, found that very uncomfortable. I felt a very strong need to have a better sense of what was going to be, what was being proposed. We now have that, and I want to praise Jeff and Rob for being really clear about your current thoughts about how the project would go, if, if you get the, the height bonuses that you would be requesting and all that. So bravo. I think we've, we've managed to get to a state where we have, we and the public have adequate information about what you have in mind. All right, so do we want to propose any additional conditions? I want to see if there's majority support. So let me refer to that June 28 memo that, that I wrote. As that memo indicates, this might be the largest residential project ever proposed in Iowa City. If approved, it would have a major transformative effect on the core of the city. In the memo, I lay out a series of reasons why I generally support the rezoning with the Planning and Zoning Commission's conditions. But I also state, I think it is necessary to attach additional conditions in order for the ultimate development to be more consistent with the Riverfront Crossing's District Master Plan, as well as to address satisfactorily other concerns that have arisen during the past two meetings, meaning earlier on. I continue that memo by stating that I strongly believe the most important things we need to do are, first, to ensure that any new residential structures designed to house as many as, potentially as many as 2,000 students, be designed and managed in a way that will enable those students to thrive academically, and I would say also to mature safely. Second, to ensure that the overall ensemble of buildings achieves a high standard of urban design and therefore enhances the quality and character of the neighborhood. Third, to ensure that the Capitol Street, right-of-way, and green spaces within the development are opened up, well furnished with street furnishings, and well landscaped. And fourth, to enable the developer to transfer density earned by his preservation of Tate Arms. So the memo goes on to list various proposed conditions, and I'm going to read three and a half of them. The first states, "The development must substantially conform with the footprint of the buildings shown on page 61 of the Downtown and Riverfront Crossing's Master Plan," quote "Master Plan," "and with the bird's eye view presented to the council on May 29, 2018," quote "bird's eye view," copies of which are attached heretofu and incorporated herein by, by reference. Second, "The development must include a landscaped and well-furnished pedestrian walkway running east-west between the buildings and an interior courtyard between the Voxman Music Building and the two easternmost buildings, as suggested in the master plan and shown in the bird's eye view." Third, "The owner shall retain an architect team to design both the exterior and interior components of the development. The architect team must have experience with both high-quality urban design and large-scale urban student housing and/or residence halls. The architect team shall be approved by the city manager after consultation with the city council." And four, "In accordance with the Riverfront Crossing Form-Based Code, any request for bonus height shall, quote, 'demonstrate excellence in building and site design, use high-quality building materials, and be designed in a manner that contributes to the quality and character of the neighborhood,' unquote." The fourth condition goes on to stipulate that the development shall, shall be eligible for height bonuses based on specific purposes. But if you, if you do the math associated with those conditions, basically, my memo proposes that, proposes conditions that would permit a maximum average height of 12 stories for the four major buildings. All right, so that's the memo in, in the hole. My sense is that there are not four council members in favor of requiring the conditions that directly pertain to height provisions. So I want to see, I'm asking my fellow council members here, I want to see if there's support for an abbreviated version. In other words, would you support the first three conditions I just read, plus the first sentence of the fourth condition, which I just read, with the understanding that we would focus a work session on possible height bonuses not later than the end of September? So I want to get a sense whether you would support those particular conditions. If you do, then we'd have to instruct our staff to have conversations with the developer to see if the developer would be willing to sign the, the CZA as amended.
I would say no. And, and here's my reason. It's the same reason I've given in the three previous meetings and, and public hearings. We've continued the public hearing now to our fourth meeting, in that what the developer has come to us and asked is for a rezoning, which by right only gives them eight stories, which they have made very clear, they have no intent to redevelop this property with only eight stories. We have ample opportunity after the rezoning to get into the very detailed negotiation of what those buildings would look like and the height. And there are a number of things that, that I personally want to make sure are, are in those negotiations and we get, and I'm sure everybody sitting up here has things, and I'm sure there's going to be an awful lot of overlap, and there may be certain things that some of us think of that others haven't, and we may or may not come to agree on, on some of those issues. But we, we have been here since, what, the early May, trying to get a rezoning done, and this, and we have to have three readings on the rezoning. I think we have, through those discussions, made it very clear to the developers that they are not going to automatically get 15 stories, that they are not going to put hundreds of thousands of dollars into renderings until they've had significant discussion with the council and/or staff to know what the requirements are going to be to come with a satisfactory height, and, and I'm not sure you're going to get a satisfactory, a height that you want out of this council, I don't know. So I do not see the need to delay the first reading, our first vote, on this rezoning when we can get all of these same conditions put into part of that negotiation when we move forward and start talking about the heights.
We have done other rezoning requests with conditions attached, and I, I don't see that this is any different. I think that Jim's suggestions for conditions are very well thought out, very thoughtful, and particularly with the students in mind, because that's obviously what this building, these buildings are going to be primarily geared towards the students. And I think that these conditions aren't, aren't asking that much. I would be in favor of it.
We're talking about conditions one through three?
Plus the first sentence of condition four, which basically restates the comprehensive, or the master plan.
And let me be clear, I am not saying I disagree with the conditions. I disagree with the process. There is no reason we can't have these same conditions as part of the negotiation for the height. So I'm not saying I disagree with the conditions. I'm saying it's the process. Let's have the first vote, get this moving forward after May, June, July, August, three months, and then start the negotiations for the height bonus. I'm not saying I disagree with, with the recommendations. I'm disagreeing with the process that's proposed of delaying this again.
Prior to tonight, did the developer weigh in on any of these proposed conditions? I mean, have we, were you aware that we were going to propose these?
Yeah, because they were in the June 28 memo.
Okay. Is it possible to get their feedback tonight? Because my, my concern is, is I think that we have to be very clear that a, that a development process is not a three- or four-month marathon. I concur with Susan on this, as far as this goes. I think we need to make a decision and articulate firmly where we are at this point and have a decision tonight. That is my preference. I'm not in favor of moving at this point.
A quick response to the marathon point-rocking.
Yeah.
There are three different reasons why we deferred three separate times.
I understand that.
The last time was upon the developer's request, and we deferred for a full month because of that. So do not put all the blame on the council for that. You know, it has taken time, yes, but look at what we've gotten as a result. We've gotten a really clear idea of what Jeff wants to do, and that's a very good thing.
Just to clarify, if you want to change conditions, it's unlikely we're going to fit, we're going to be able to do that tonight, because it has to be an executed conditional zoning agreement. They may give you feedback, but we won't get that.
Okay.
Yeah, for me, I really think this is really separate issues, like the, our expectation for the building to happen and approving this rezoning. I think I was ready to move to really, you know, approve the rezoning for the first consideration today and request like maybe a work session or something where we ask the developer to come, and we would lay our expectation for that building. The only thing that now holding me is if we approve this rezoning, that means 10% is affordable housing, it will go with it. And the inside affordable housing and the 10, no, 10 years now, you know, I really, 10 years will go like this fast, and we will, as some of the public said, we will lose this affordability.
Mazalier? If I might, I would argue that that could be negotiable as part of the height bonus.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I understand, but you know, I hope if I can ask if also they will... Phil will be perfect for this, even though we cannot tell the, you know, by the law, we don't have to tell them that because they have the code saying 10% affordable inside to build somewhere else with this. But still, I think we should move forward to approve the first consideration and have a separate meeting and lay our expectation if they want the bonus, they have to like do what we want as a council. And we can do this in separate meeting, that's what I think. That's why I don't like, I'm not supporting the defer.
Just to clarify, with respect to the affordable housing, the basic affordable housing provisions and requirements are in the Form-Based Code. There is the ability to negotiate for changed or additional, et cetera, as you pointed out, in connection with height bonuses. But the provision in the CZA at this point on affordable housing is just to make sure we have it as part of the rezoning and that it, all it does is simply reflect the basic requirements, and that is not likely to change at the CZA stage.
Okay, may I ask you something? If we say yes, we did it tonight, and we approved the first consideration, that means we are approving eight floors, we are approving 10% affordable housing, right? Only like eight stories building.
Without bonus height, yes.
Exactly. But tonight, only we are approving this, and later on, we can do the rest of, like if they want bonus height, and we can negotiate that and approve later. Then let's do it.
John, I haven't heard your view.
The conditions that we're considering do not cover the question of building heights. They're related more to the conformance of the site plan, and I think probably one of the most critical issues with a project of this magnitude is the retention of an architect team for both the exterior and interior. I would not think that would be something that the applicant would object to, that that be part of the project. So, I would assume, I may be missing something here, but that the four conditions that the mayor outlined here would be acceptable to the applicant. On a project of this magnitude, I would like, in writing at this point in the process, including those conditions as part of the rezoning. As I said, I don't believe the applicant would object to them. If they were to object to having an architect team, that would be a real concern to me.
I think, I'm sorry, John, but I think the first one does reflect on height.
How so?
It's just the...
It must substantially conform with the footprint of the building.
Footprint is not height. Footprint is the two-dimensional base.
But what about the bird's eye view?
Okay.
The bird's eye view is not a...
Well, then we really need clarification, we will need clarification on that then because the master plan has been pointed to as the four to six.
I think the intent is...
And so I think, I think that's not necessary.
All right, well, I can clarify that because I wrote it, right? By footprint, I mean the two-dimensional space covered by each of the buildings. I do not mean the height of the buildings.
Okay.
All right? And by the bird's eye view, I mean what Rob Decker showed to us on May 29th, which showed 15-story buildings.
Okay.
And there, you know, but I'm not implying that the developer is necessarily going to get the height bonuses. We haven't discussed that, so.
It's a good clarification.
And part of the importance of that is, as I recall, in the conditions as they're written now, there is no site plan requirement. It's elevations to be reviewed by planning and zoning, but not the site plan, the footprint as Jim described it. So, I think there are, again, on a project of this magnitude, having these relatively limited agreements moving forward, I think, are worth considering, particularly the question of the architect team.
If I could clarify that just a little bit also, I do, that condition should not be interpreted to mean that we want the current architect team gotten rid of. We just want to, as I wrote it, I just wanted to make sure there was some urban design expertise involved with the team, and that someone who has expertise with regard to the interior design of the building, or of the buildings, in terms of, what's the word of the language, and has experience with regard to large-scale urban student housing and/or residence halls, that someone is involved on the team. Rob?
John, I'm a little unclear as to where you're going with the comment, but I can tell you that that is taken care of in building code. It's not, it won't even be an issue. A building, a 15-story building cannot be completed without a licensed architect. It will be a, you cannot complete a project of this magnitude without a licensed architect. The city building officials will require it, the IBC requires it, a whole multitude liability requires it. We would be insane to do it without one.
Well, this is a little bit more specific than that, in that it's describing that the architect team must have experience on the project.
Absolutely. We would be crazy to get one that didn't.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I mean...
I don't think you're disagreeing with any of these conditions.
I may be crazy in many ways, but I can tell you that we are going through that process. Susan spoke to it very well. We will cross that bridge, trust me. It's going to happen, but we want to get the, as you know from the first meeting, we want to get through what we hope is a formality to get, we want to do all of the things you guys are discussing, but we want, we, much like you, want to have a little more clarity ourselves, right? I know the discussion is obviously for your side of things and what you're seeing. You have to understand that we want the same from you, and we have to get some of that. Nobody is going to leverage something. It's a big project for us too, right? And we have to have some clarity moving forward in the same way that you guys do. And I think that is what I always refer to as Phase Two can do, and I think Jim's comments can be addressed in that phase. I think they're good discussions to have. We look forward to those discussions. But to me, it's almost a doubling up, almost a deja vu of like, didn't we just do this? Now we're doing it all over again, and it feels like kind of a churning that doesn't have to happen on anybody's behalf. I think we can accomplish what we all want to accomplish without doing this sort of doubling back, if that makes sense. So hopefully...
Rob, I don't understand what you mean by doubling back.
I, reiterating what she said just a little bit ago, in that, you know that we intend to go to 15, right? We can't go to 15 without the processes that are in place, which we're all now very familiar with, design committees, going back to P&amp;Z, conditional zoning agreements, all of those tools that we have. We can't achieve what we want to achieve without going, not that we wouldn't anyway, but it can't happen. It just, you can't do this project without it. And so, to apply it to the conditional zoning agreement, to me, just does, it does the same thing that the design review is going to do. It does the same thing that design review during a height bonus is going to do.
Okay, thanks.
Does that make a little more sense?
I don't think the three and a half conditions that I'm proposing go to the details of design review. They certainly do not go into height bonuses, and that's why I said that we would want, if we, if a majority agreed to these conditions, we would want to instruct the, our city manager, well, not our city manager, we would want to hold, focus a work session on the height bonus aspects not later than the end of September, so that you all could get on with your work. You know, so I'm not trying to hinder the progress. I think what I had in mind with regard to these first three and a half proposed conditions are to make sure that the project is in greater conformity with the master plan for the Riverfront Crossings District, or not in greater, but in, you know, substantial conformity with the master plan, and that we would have, we'd know that an architect, an architectural team was on board that had some urban design expertise and considerable expertise with regard to the interior design of the buildings. Now, why did I propose that? Because, to the best of my knowledge, Jeff, neither you nor anyone else in the Clark family has experience with regard to building large residence hall, student housing kinds of structures in which students are designed, in which are designed in a way that will enable students to thrive, both academically and mature safely and so on. You don't have that body of experience yet, so I want to make sure that you've got the right expertise on board. That's what I had in mind when I wrote that.
And again, I think we still can get that when we're negotiating the heights, and we could move forward with the vote.
I agree.
I guess I don't understand why you don't want to add these conditions. It had been said that you want this to be a high-quality building that caters to the student experience, and I think those conditions that Jim is expressing are helpful for the student experience. Those are things that...
Pauline, I don't disagree. I don't think Rockney disagrees. The point is process. We've been at this for now our fourth meeting to try and get a first vote on a rezoning when we can still address these when we're negotiating on the height. I agree with the majority of these, and maybe, I have to go back through them again, but maybe every single bit of it. And yes, there's been delays for different reasons, but we are now into our third month of trying to get a first vote on a rezoning. I don't see where, as a city, we have anything to lose by going ahead and doing our first vote and having these conditions part of our negotiation with the height. There is no question in mind that if we do this rezoning, they are not putting up eight-story buildings on there. They are not. So, we have nothing, we have every, all the leverage in the world over the owners and the developers because they want to go 15 stories on that property. And so, we can work on getting these in as we negotiate the height and get this process moving.
If there's a guarantee that that's going to happen, because everyone seems to think that, some of us are height adverse or don't like tall buildings, but that's not what this is all about at all. It's mostly the quality of the buildings, and I appreciate the comment that, do you want a high-quality building, and we want to get it right, and people have talked about how poorly the Pentagon Crest Gardens now look and don't fit into the downtown. We need to guarantee, you know, 20 years ago, people probably thought this was a great-looking apartment complex and wonderful for the students. We don't want that 20 years from now for people to be saying, what were they thinking? Why did they do that? Why did they make it look like that? I think that Jim has some very good ideas of how these buildings can blend in.
As a point of clarity for all of us, if we approve the rezoning as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission without these other conditions attached, that would apply to the land, and any possible developer of the property would have to conform with that, with the conditional zoning agreement, right? I mean, you would agree with that, right? So, there's always the hypothetical possibility that Jeff Clark could sell the property and some other developer could come in. So, I want to make sure that, you know, the conditions run with the land, that any possible future developer would have to conform with those conditions.
And the city initiated rezoning of 20-plus acres in Riverfront Crossings with absolutely no idea of what was going to be built on those pieces of property, because we wanted to kind of jumpstart redevelopment in that area. And so, and we've done some others down there. Remind me, Jeff, Miller's property, there's been two or three others down there that we've done that we did not, P&amp;Z and council did not have full renderings on. And so, again, and I just think the risk here is so incredibly low because this is such, I think, as Rob has said repeatedly, this is probably the most valuable piece of property in Riverfront Crossings for redevelopment because of its proximity to the university. The other piece that might come close is City Carton because of its proximity to the park and the river, okay? And so, the idea that anybody that has owned this land for as long as the Clark family has owned it would even think about not developing it to its full potential or would sell it to somebody else is ludicrous. And so, I have absolutely no worry in my mind that they're going to go for their 15 stories, and we're going to have every opportunity to get every single one of these conditions put in as part of that negotiation. And so, I do, I think after three months and four meetings, that it's time to have a first vote.
Okay, so I understand the situation. So, if we vote on this, on the motion I proposed, it would be a voice vote, right? Yeah. Then we would close the public hearing and proceed to first consideration of the ordinance conditioned on a CZA that has already been signed by the applicant, right? Those are the steps. All right. I've been listening to the conversation, as you have, and I hear three and three.
Yeah, but...
That's right.
In this case, better to defer.
Tells me that the rezoning fails.
Yeah.
No, the motion to defer.
The motion to defer to fails, and the rezoning may fail.
House, excuse me. I know you haven't had a chance to fully think about it, but these three and a half conditions I proposed are not onerous. I think you would agree.
There's also election in 2019. I think this could be very detrimental to keep anybody running for reelection in 2019.
Yeah.
I just want to ask Rob questions. Have you seen, like, his four, you said four or three of them?
Three and a half, the first three and a half.
Have you seen them before today? For me, I saw all this today, but what about you? Because I think it was there on the...
We've seen Jim's letter. The CZA was signed with no questions asked, gave everything that the city wanted. The fact that a new CZA would be required with Jim's letter attached is new news, yes.
Okay, and have you...
I would say that the, I don't think the conditions are onerous. I think they're unnecessary. I think they're unnecessary. I just, I don't understand why other projects have not, literally adjacent to this facility have been stamped through the process to be 15 stories, and I don't think the same, I don't think the same things had to go into those projects. I appreciate that it's a large project. The large project in and of itself will create, will create the conditions that you want. You cannot do a project of this scale. You don't pump money into a project of this scale. Why would you do this? Why would you just willy-nilly do something of this scale without a forethought and without smart design and without, I don't know about you guys, I wouldn't throw my money into it, but, you know, I'm speaking more now on my own behalf than on the development team, but I just, in my opinion, it's just an unnecessary step. I think we can accomplish the same things. I don't think that, you know, I don't want to speak to the, to the things in a letter like you've said, like you've all said very well. I think there are some, I think, I don't think the general tenure of what you're asking is unreasonable, but I think that it's unnecessary because it's going to, the project is so unique, you know, you said it yourself, we provide a lot of information, you know what we want to do here. We are telling you that we want to go to that next step, and we want to come back to you and to P&amp;Z. P&amp;Z knew that. We had that discussion with them. That's why they moved it through like that. We said, we'll be back to see you, to have these discussions.
Okay, if we don't talk about the height now, we just talk about his point, are you agreeing to those point or not? You know, height, we will talk about it later. We're going to have like penalty of time to... We're going to have, like, penalty of time to talk about height once.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I, you know, speaking quickly and in response to those very quickly, we're not going to agree to conditional zoning agreement right here and now. There's not a chance we would do that. We need, we would need to review them and under, and see what the language is. I mean, you're talking about it, you're talking about a pretty high-level document. It's, again, it's not that, we've signed a CZA before, no questions asked, that had conditions attached to it. We're not opposed to doing that, but we're not going to do it right here in the middle of a council. We're just not going to.
Well, I just say, I think also, just even from the questions that Eleanor has asked and others, I don't think that these conditions are necessarily absolutely clear either, so.
Yeah.
Well, this is frustrating. I shared a memo with everyone on this council on June the 28th, and that memo made it very clear I was proposing new conditions for the zoning.
And since this is will be, like, really failing both way, can he defer it?
Yeah. If I can make a suggestion, because the three-to-three gridlock that we're in, I don't think is going to serve anybody very well here, and I think everybody wants to see this to a point where we can move it forward. And I'm saying this, and we'd need kind of a head nod from the developer as well, from the, from the council, but if, if the council can give me some leeway to work with these first three conditions and the first sentence of the four, to where you allow me to work with the developer to massage the language if needed, to still accomplish what you want to accomplish and yet maybe address any concerns that they would have with that language, we could try to get a CZA signed and back to you at your next meeting. And then I think it'd be appropriate, assuming that we have a consensus, that we try to catch up a little bit and collapse the second and third reading down the road, so we stay on the same path as where we're at now. Instead of three readings, we're going to have one and a collapse two and three. But I think I'm going to need a little bit of flexibility in working with these first three points and that, this first sentence of the fourth one.
I would be comfortable with that, Jeff. I don't know if the developer would, but I would be, in fact, I expected that you would have to discuss these proposed conditions with the developer and come back to us with something that may be a little bit different from what I recommended. And I don't have any problem whatsoever with condensing one of the future meetings.
Okay. Getting some head nods up here. Does that sound okay to move us forward?
Yeah, I feel, I know that this, this seems like, Susan, you've been emphasizing the duration and so forth. We have a much clearer idea about what this project is now than we did when it was first submitted. And I would, I would say that further articulation of what we're agreeing to is just another step in that process. I think we all want to move the project forward. It's, this, there's, to me, a false dichotomy. It's maybe just a question of, we're at a milestone with the rezoning. What do we want to see at, at this juncture?
Yeah, I'm actually, like John, I'm excited about the project. I think that area has needed change for a long time, and I might even suggest, when you were talking about retail, that hopefully there'd be some type of grocery in there because I think that's needed. That's, that's lacking in the downtown. The bread garden's there, but it kind of, something that the students could afford. And I think I would be truly excited about that. So, I think if you continue that idea about perhaps having some retail in at least one of the buildings, then I would be even more excited about it.
I think Jeff made a very good suggestion. If that's agreeable with you folks, we can vote on the proposed, on the motion at hand, which is to continue the public hearing and defer first consideration until the 21st with sort of a shared understanding that we would collapse one of the subsequent readings. Yeah? Okay. So, that is the motion on the floor. Any further discussion about that? Hearing non, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for the suggestion, Jeff. I think it was a very good one.
We do need a motion for correspondence.
Yeah, yeah. Do we have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved. Second?
By Taylor, seconded by Sully. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 4C, rezoning Lower West Branch Road and Taft Avenue. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 8.02 acres of property located at the southwest corner of Lower West Branch Road and Taft Avenue, from interim development single-family residential IDRS zone, to medium-density single-family RS8 zone, and low-density multifamily RM zone. This is second consideration. Could I have a motion, please?
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Sully, seconded by Thomas. Hearing non, roll call, please.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Ms.?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item five, Macaulster Boulevard, Gilbert Street to Sycamore Street Improvement. This is a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property interest necessary for construction of the Macaulster Boulevard Gilbert Street to Sycamore Street Improvement Project. Open the public hearing. I just opened a public hearing. Are you here for it by any chance? No? Okay. I don't see anyone who wants to speak. I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Sully, seconded by Thomas. Discussion. Jeff, is somebody going to briefly describe this for us?
This is a requirement of state law. Anytime you're going to be looking to acquire property in an agricultural zone, so this is setting the stage for the acquisition of the, of right-of-way needed for the Macaulster
Property owners would have received notice, have received notice of this hearing and the opportunity to speak.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Any council discussion? Hearing non, roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item six, Camp Cardinal Boulevard Speed Limit Ordinance Amendment. This is an ordinance amending Title IX, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter Three, entitled Rules of the Road, Section Six, entitled Speed Restrictions, to establish a 35 mile-an-hour speed limit on Camp Cardinal Boulevard from Melrose Avenue North to a point 550 feet south of the city limits, and to establish a 25 mile-an-hour speed limit on Camp Cardinal Boulevard from the city limits to a point 550 feet south. This is first consideration. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Mem, seconded by Sully. Discussion. I'm very pleased to see this. I know several times we've discussed that particular intersection, and we had talked about having, I don't know, a four-way stop there, I think, and that's not going to happen. But the speed limits are a really good step forward. I'm really happy to see the collaboration with Coralville on this. Thank you, Kent, for engaging in those conversations. Any further discussion? Hearing non, roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item seven, Agreement with Delray Ridge LP. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Delray Ridge LP for receipt of city funds for a 2018 low-income housing tax credit project. Could I have a motion, please?
Move.
Move the resolution.
Moved by Thomas?
Second?
Seconded by Sully. Discussion. Is somebody going to address this?
Oh.
Tracy?
This is a resolution to approve the first Lytech project that you have approved with the Affordable Housing Fund set aside for Lytech projects. Delray Ridge is a project at 628 Dubuque Street. It will provide 33 units of housing. 29 will be affordable. Four will be market rate with unrestricted incomes. There are 17 one-bedrooms, 16 two-bedrooms. They have a mix of affordability of nine at 30 and 40 percent median income. 20 will be at, set at 60 percent median income, and those are the, the remaining are those four unrestricted ones. The affordability period for this project is 30 years. You originally approved it at a 2 percent loan over 30 years. The Housing Fellowship requested that, after review of their pro forma, that you approve. It amortized over 40 years, and the HCDC didn't approve that officially, but they did have a consensus that they recommended, that there was consensus that it was approved. The property is within the Riverfront Crossings, Central Crossing Subdistrict, so we will have to come back to you with a amendment regarding first-floor residential at this location. That'll be on the next P&amp;Z agenda, and it'll follow the council process. And then Mary Ann is here if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you, Tracy. Any council discussion?
I just want to say that I'm very, very blessed about this project. It's amazing, and the good thing about it, like, one-third is affordable for the people making income like 30 to 40 percent of the area median income, which is great. And hopefully, I'm going to see those kind of, like, often, and this is really great, and thank you for that.
Yeah, it's very pleasing to see. Thank you for your good work. No further discussion? Roll call, please.
Throg Martin?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Ms.
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item eight, Animal Services. This is an ordinance amending Title VIII, entitled Police Regulations, Chapter Three, entitled General Animal Regulations, and Chapter Four, entitled Animal Control, to provide for animal services. This is first consideration. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mem, seconded by Sully. Discussion. Good evening, Liz. Good to see you again.
Thank you. Good evening. Any questions?
You're amending the ordinance.
I am. Yep.
Would the council like to do this?
On the to-do list for a while.
Brief overview of the memo?
Yeah.
Would that be helpful? Liz, could you just give a brief synopsis?
Sure. So, this ordinance amends, makes Chapter Eight, Eight-Four include everything, so it's not going to be two different chapters. It'll be all in Eight-Four. And the other big change is that the civil penalty has been $10 since 1997. Be raised to $100, which brings it up with all the other, other penalties. So, I think we were the last one to get up to speed there. Items of note, prohibiting tethering for longer than 30 minutes in a three-hour period. That's something that anti-tethering laws are very common in animal welfare these days. There's, there's over 23 states and an additional 200 communities that have either tethering is prohibited completely, or it's restricted to short-time periods and, you know, welfare, the ways that the animals are tethered and things are appropriate in welfare, so the animal doesn't get hurt and doesn't become a risk to public safety and things like that. So, the tethering is a, is a big move for us, very positive. Prohibiting circuses. You know, we don't really have a venue in Iowa City or the zoning to invite a circus in anymore, so this one was just sort of an easy thing to do. It's a good thing for animal welfare. Circuses, events that bring in animals that are exotic or wild for the purposes of entertainment only, is just not something that the community wants to see anymore. So, that's been something that people have been pretty vocal about. Oh, specifically addressing animals left in cars. And statistically, this year, just since May of 2018, so May to August 1st, Animal Services and the Police Department handled 50 calls with an animal in a car that was left, mostly at someplace that's like a marketplace or a place that they're going shopping at. And that's something that really needs to be addressed in this community. So, making, leaving your animal in a car prohibited, and that's any temperatures, so it could certainly happen in the wintertime too, but really what we're talking about are the, you know, the really hot, hot summer days here in Iowa. Prohibiting animals from being transported in the back of a pickup truck, not in, not within the confinement of like a topper or a carrier that's been secured down so that the animal can't either be thrown out when someone stops suddenly, or particularly an animal doesn't jump out and cause an accident. Again, you know, public safety, that's actually the bigger risk, is the animal jumping out. Because even though we, we would like to train our animals very well, they're animals and they're unpredictable, and an animal jumping out into traffic can certainly cause an accident. And then irresponsible owner is another concept that a lot of progressive cities and municipalities are incorporating to their animal ordinances. A violator would have four, you know, four convictions basically for our ordinances. And this isn't really something that we're, we run across a lot, but we want to be able to have a tool to remove the animals from the owner and not allow them to have animals again until we decide when it's okay for them to do that, for a period of time or education. Because any animal, any, any dog, any aged dog, any breed of dog can become aggressive or a danger to other public, depending on how it's maintained or cared for or not cared for. And so, what we're really trying to do here is punish the deed and not the animal. And those situations that, where the person is really at fault and the animal is not, we want to be able to get that animal to a better place and see that it doesn't happen again. So, those are repeat offenders. And then clarifying some definitions in the permits. So, we have a process in the, in the city where if you own four or more dogs or six or more cats in your own home, that, we want you to take out a multiple, you know, animal permit. And previously, those had sort of been lumped in with places that are like commercial kennels, like Lucky Paws has a, you know, commercial kennel. So, really, the definitions are much more appropriate now as far as someone who lives in a house and has six or seven or eight cats versus, you know, Lucky Paws that has 25 dogs there every day. So, the definitions are better suited now. Anything?
Great. Thanks for the overview.
Thank you.
So, we have a motion on the floor. Council discussion?
Glad to see the improvements.
Yeah, me too. And frankly, I wish when I was younger, I had been aware of some of the risks associated that, that animals can encounter. You mentioned at least one that I had some personal experience with and I wish I hadn't. So, I'm referring to letting an animal overheat in a car, and luckily, the animal survived, scared of the cat, you know, but I didn't know that it was a risk for the cat to leave her out there in the car, so I'm glad we're instituting these changes. Any further discussion?
I'm supportive of all of these changes, and I think that they're all really favorable. I do think these are major changes, though. At least they weren't necessarily on my radar screen. I'm supportive of all of them, but I think for the audience out there, we'll have at least two more readings. I really encourage you to look at these very closely. They all look terrific to me. You know, I have a few animals in my house. I won't say how many. I think I'm within goat, I won't tell you. But I really hope that people really look at this very closely, because I think these are major changes that I was not aware of, so I'm hoping people really will weigh in at next meeting.
Mayor, before you vote, it'd be negligent of my duties if I didn't acknowledge Liz. She is leaving us in 18 days. I'm not counting or anything. She has been a phenomenal leader of our Animal Services operation. She's going to be impossible to replace. We're not even going to try to replace her with someone of her caliber because it's simply not possible. She has the respect of her staff, her supervisors, her peers throughout the city, the community at large, and we're going to miss her dearly. She's moving on to fulfill a dream of hers, which is to open up her own business here in town, and we know she's going to do a great job there. So, thank you very much for all you've done for us.
You beat me to the punch, Jeff. I was going to say something very similar. Some of you know that Liz and I used to live right next door to one another. She's an absolutely wonderful person. Liz, you've done a superb job at the animal shelter or whatever, and boy, we're going to miss you big time. Yeah.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Rock Martin.
Yes. Motion carries six to zero. Item nine, massage business requirements. This is an ordinance amending Title V entitled Business and Licensed Regulations to add a new Chapter III entitled Massage Business Information Requirement. First consideration, could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Thomas. Discussion. Eleanor, would you, huh? What did I say?
Thomas and Thomas.
Thomas and Thomas.
It's late.
Wow. Yeah. Eleanor, could you provide an overview of this, or somebody better?
There's people in the audience.
Jory Bailey from our police department.
All right. I'll just call you Thomas also, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll accept that tonight. Good evening. My name is Jory Bailey. I'm a sergeant with the police department. And I'm one of the several staff, city staff, that have the opportunity to work on the ordinance that you see in front of you from several different departments, not just the police department. At the onset, we want to make a very clear delineation between massage therapy, the massage therapy, the licensed massage therapists who are practicing legitimate massage therapy in our community, and between that and those who are practicing the illicit or illegitimate, illegal practice and using massage as a facade for their business. So we want to certainly focus on promoting the positive with the licensed massage therapists. I'm going to give a little bit of background as to what's led us to this change, this addition. And that is that the state laws, I'm sure you see in your action report, changed last year. That law that prohibited local government from regulating massage therapy businesses changed, allowing local government now to regulate massage therapy businesses within our city boundaries. Since that change, as you've seen in the media, many municipalities around us and from across the state have enacted ordinance or moved to start the process of enacting ordinance to regulate massage therapy in their communities. It's the intent behind ordinances like those and like the one that you have before you, to impact the illicit side of massage. And again, I clearly delineate between the legitimate and the illicit. To impact those that use the word massage as a facade for their illicit or illegal business. Up until this point, we've had few tools, not very many effective tools, to make an impact upon those businesses. And I'll talk about a few of them. But what we're trying to impact is, for lack of a better term, prostitution and human trafficking. State laws regulate prostitution, and the laws related to sex work are regulated by the state. We at the local level don't obviously have the opportunity or the ability to effect that change. Additionally, those laws are related to enforcement and criminal enforcement of Johns who attend or who use these businesses, or even the practitioners within the businesses. And it's our goal to take a victim-centered approach, and it's not our goal to enforce against those potential victims of human trafficking within the brick and mortar structures. We believe that enforcement of, or at least the tool that you have before you is probably the best option, even above and beyond criminal enforcement, again, because it gives us the ability, at a lesser level, to enforce the business model behind these businesses, to stop the business from practicing, and even to, and most importantly, to give us the opportunity to have a face-to-face contact with those victims of human trafficking, and then intend, in turn, or subsequently, be able to provide them the services that we have in our community, like those offered by RVAP as an example. Because of this, and as I mentioned, most importantly, we think this is a good tool, the massage business ordinance that you have in front of you. We've explored other municipalities' ordinances, and we think the one that city staff has come up with before you is a less impactful tool, a less impactful ordinance upon the practicing legitimate licensed massage therapists in our community. And it's a tool that allows us to still have that same impact, that same victim-centered approach, while being less impactful upon the legitimate businesses. Our approach is, and I'll let Jan, Jan Ream, step up and talk about how we intend on enforcement of the ordinance to occur, and then we'll answer any questions that you may have in regards to that enforcement.
Thanks, Jory.
Thank you.
Hi, Jan.
Hi. I'm Jan Ream. I work in Neighborhood and Development Services. As Jory mentioned, this is a very interdepartmental approach to trying to solve this problem in our community, and it is a community problem. So as the ordinance is proposed, basically, we would post a form on our website that massage businesses would be required to fill out and show us upon request. It's not a form that we will keep in our records. It will not be public information. I can compare it kind of to what we did with the housing code with the information and acknowledgement form for landlords. They're supposed to fill those out and provide them to us upon request. And this form would basically require the name and contact information of the owner and the manager of the business, and the names and the license numbers of the massage therapists working there. It would be the sort of thing that a staff person, probably a person from Neighborhood and Development Services, would go in to a business and request that form. And if they can't provide it, or if they provide us with incorrect information or information that's obviously fraudulent, we would then have the capabilities of placarding that business. It would basically be a do not occupy, business cannot occur in this space. And with that placard, we bring the whole community as part of helping us as a whole community. Anybody could, if they saw people going in and out of there when it was placarded, the police could go in and they could say no. What this also does, by not providing, by basically demonstrating to us that they are not a legitimate licensed massage therapy business, it gives our police officers the tools that they need to get a warrant to be able to go in to the actual business itself. They do not have that ability now to meet face-to-face with the workers in these businesses and try and at least let them know there is help in our community for them, that they do not have to remain in that business. They don't have to remain victims. So we really see this as having no impact on legitimate massage therapy businesses. But it gives us the tool that we're going to need to help shut down the ones that are in our community doing illicit things. Excuse me, I have a bit of a cold. Do you have any questions about the process, sir?
I'm assuming for the business that's operating in good faith, a licensed massage therapist, if through oversight or they don't know about the new ordinance, they didn't get the education that I know you're going to do, there would be some safe harbor provision.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, we've, we had.
You could just elaborate.
We had two open houses where we invited the licensed massage therapists, therapists to come in and talk to us. And we presented our ideas, and there were a couple of different options. And that was a concern, you know. Well, what if you come in and I can't produce it right away? And it's, I mean, we're not going in heavy-handed, you know. I'd say, well, it's fine. We'll be back in a day or two, you know. This is the form. It's on the city website. Just fill it out, and I'll be back. And then we'll, you'll be fine, you know. Just like we do with any other form of enforcement in terms of zoning or nuisance code. I mean, we don't immediately go in and issue $250 citations.
And the state agency that's publicly available, so you can instantly then cross-link, is that how that would work?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we can check those names and license numbers on the state database.
Any other questions for Jan? Or Jory? Looks like no more questions. Thank you.
Okay.
Would anybody else like to address this? Hi there.
Hello. Thank you. Can you hear me? Is that good? So, thank you. And I do want to thank the folks that are massage therapists.
Could you please say your name, please?
Oh, sorry, thank you. Jamie Nevens is my name. I'm a massage therapist, Back Together Massage. So obviously, right, I care about not being confused with a sex worker. So I really do appreciate that the staff did do a lot to reach out to massage therapists. I recognize in other cities where they've placed similar things, they haven't, and it, I believe, has been sort of a, much more of a burden on small businesses. I'm just going to read a letter that I wrote to the, a letter to the editor of Little Village. I also had emailed you each. I don't know if anybody got the emails earlier this afternoon, but it's, I've got a link to this letter in there, and then I've also got a link to a Google Doc to sort of back up a lot of what is in here. I've done some more research since the meeting that was had July 18th where they invited us. But most of, much of what is in here is cited in the email that I sent you all. So, "Massage ordinance is being proposed across Iowa are dangerous. Locally, Cedar Rapids, Coralville, and now Iowa City are considering policy to make all licensed massage therapists register or be licensed within their city. Some include large fees, the disclosure of business information, limiting business hours, and other unnecessary hoops. They claim to address the problem of human trafficking and prostitution. The fears and concerns I hear from my massage therapy peers could be mitigated with the decriminalization of sex work." I recognize that that's a state issue, and we can't do that on the city level. But raiding and closing all of the sex work establishments will likely increase the requests for sex that LMTs already must occasionally field." It's not funny. Moreover, such raids will definitely increase sex workers' vulnerability while driving traffickers farther underground. "Prostitution, aka sex work, is not the same as sex trafficking. Sex work is consenting adult. Sex trafficking is rape. Linking the two increases the risk for people involved in both. To claim that enough similarities between massage parlors, sex work establishments, and the massage therapy profession exist, the policy is necessary to tell the difference is dangerous for massage therapists. While the policy claims to help victims of sex trafficking, when asked," so at that meeting, "officials had not consulted any of the local rape crisis advocacy organizations." ARVAT, Monsoon, NISA, Transformative Healing, are you familiar with all of those? "A sex trafficking victim may not seek help from police because they would be perceived as a sex worker and face arrest. Fear of discrimination or deportation are additional deterrents. Working with the organizations that have the most direct contact with victims seems a critical part of advocacy. The Polaris Project, a nonprofit with a stated objective to end human trafficking, is the main source cited by officials. However, the organization has been criticized multiple times for using false data, including that related to massage parlors. Exxon is listed as one of Polaris's biggest funders, but Exxon has been tangled in lawsuits for human trafficking for over a decade. Organizations like Amnesty International, Human Rights Watch, World Health Organization, Global Alliance Against Trafficking Women, and UNAIDS all made statements condemning the conflation of sex trafficking and sex work. Instead, they call for the decriminalization of consensual sex work, a movement supported by officials in cities like Washington DC and Chicago. Rhode Island decriminalized sex work between 2003 to 2009. Statistics from that period show a 40% drop in female gonorrhea rates statewide. Reported rape offenses dropped by 30%. That's a third. In an environment where sex work is decriminalized, workers can state their services without fear of arrest. This fear leads them to hide under the massage label. Working indoors, they are far less likely to become victims of violence or become trafficked themselves. Additionally, they may be more willing to provide information to law enforcement about suspected trafficking rings. For the benefit of LMTs, consensual sex workers, and victims of trafficking, I hope that this ordinance will get scrapped and that the city will reevaluate its arrest and prosecution policies for sex workers." And then I'm also curious how they decide to ask who, like, for their paper, I guess, or their papers, or their registration. I think that's all that I had to say. Like I said, y'all should have that in the email, and like I said, have done more research. So if you need more resources on this, I can get them.
Thank you, Jamie. I want to make sure you know this is first reading. We'll have to do two more readings.
Okay. Thank you.
So that means two weeks from now, there'll be another reading, two weeks after that, another reading.
Okay.
So people can come speak, try to persuade us one way or another.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Jory or Jan, do either of you have an answer to the last question that Jamie just
I believe it'll be very similar to how we do our current enforcement with zoning and nuisance. It will be a community concern about a particular business. We'll get a complaint. Well, you know, people will see suspicious activity, and they'll notify us and say this just seems a little odd. That's how we do our enforcement now. So I think, I see no reason to do it any differently.
What about the question of hours? I mean, so it's my understanding that this just relates to having to register. Are there any hours components that they can only?
No, no. And it's, I kind of want to make that clear, too. We're not asking them to register with the city. There's, there'll be no database that will say, you know, these are the licensed massage therapy businesses in Iowa City. This is just a form we're saying that they need to have if we ask for it. It's not a licensing, it's not a registration. We're putting no restrictions on hours or types. I mean, it, basically, it's, we want to know who is the manager of the business and who the licensed LMTs are. Probably the Jory or Chief Matherley could speak to the fact that when traditional enforcement has gone in and tried to get some of this information, nobody knows who the owner is. Nobody knows who the manager is. And, you know, it's, without, you know, some concrete information to go on, there's not a whole lot that they can do. So we're not, other cities have taken a much more, you know, where they're actually requiring licenses, and they're restricting hours, and they're doing a lot of different things. We're not doing that. Is that, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. And is this the only profession subject to this requirement, the licensed massage therapist?
At this time, yes.
Okay.
Now, there are exemptions in that ordinance that you'll see, and that they mirror the state exemptions. So for instance, if you're an LMT who works in a doctor's office or a chiropractic office, those are exempt businesses from our ordinance.
And, Rockney, just to clarify, we do have this model somewhat set up for landlords, too. There's a tenant disclosure form that they're required to have signed and keep on file. And if we come across issues, we can request to see that to ensure that they're disclosing that information to their tenants. But that's a tenant landlord exchange there where this is a business, slightly different, but similar model.
And if they don't provide it, you can get a warrant to search?
Well, if they can't provide us with the information, we can placard the business and say that you cannot, you cannot do this business here. You cannot have people here occupying the space. And then if they continue, then we can get a warrant, yes. Is that, is that right? Yeah.
Any other questions for Jan? Thank you, Jan. Any further discussion? Council discussion?
You know, I do have some concerns about this. Every single person here I know is absolutely against human sex trafficking and victims, and I know that every single person here wants to do everything in their power to make sure that we provide adequate resources to protect. I'm going to support it tonight, but I got to tell you, I hope people will weigh in on this, because I think in terms of forcing people who haven't done anything wrong necessarily to have mandatory record-keeping requirements, and if they don't show, I think one of the aspects I view of personal liberty is you don't have, you don't have to talk to the police if you don't want to. I have some concerns about this in terms of how it's being done. I'm going to support it tonight, but I think in terms of the enforcement mechanism, that if you don't provide this, you can have essentially a warrant to search the business. There's some concerns I have at this point, so. So, I encourage people to continue to monitor this very closely.
Got it. Anyone else?
I mean, I guess I kind of agree with what you're saying, Rockney, and I think this is a problem that does not obviously have a perfect solution by any, you know, by any stretch of the imagination, and I'm going to vote for it tonight. I still want to do more reading on it. I want to look a little more at what Jamie has mentioned tonight as well, but I'm going to vote for it tonight, but I'm, this is one of these reasons I'm glad we have three votes on these things, to give it more thought, too. Because I have the greatest respect for what our staff does in terms of their researching and trying to find good solutions, but we have the ultimate decisions.
Right. I see another person would like to speak to this topic.
Good evening, Ryan Hall. I didn't sign in earlier, so I'm going to do that probably another time. I, too, have great concern for the sort of targeted enforcement of this. I do also want to give energy to, you know, we all do not want any trafficking, human, sex, or otherwise, to happen in our community. I just don't see this as an effective or a very, not a very effective solution to the problem. And the way it's spelled out in the proposal is those who can afford a home and practice within their home, or those who have a hospital job, and are LMTs, are exempt from this sort of regulation, which leaves folks who don't have the privilege of having a hospital job or a home to be under this sort of regulation. And having the sort of sex work, which is, which is what it should be called, not trafficking, under the umbrella of illicit, just sort of demonizes the work itself. Sex is a work. It is labor. It is some act that people perform in order to make a living. And oftentimes, people are pushed to margins where they need to do things like perform sex acts in order to put a roof over their head and food on the table. And I think mostly everyone in this room has the privilege of working within the regulated market and not having to resort to such acts, and I think we need to be incredibly cognizant of that moving forward. I think this regulation would disproportionately fall on women of color, on poor folks, on those who are pushed to the margins, and I, and if we are really going to be intentional about contact with police, this is going to disproportionately increase contact with police with people of color. So, these are my initial concerns, and I don't want the city to move in a direction that continues to criminalize sex work and to demonize and feel like those who are, who need to perform these acts in order to make a living, to make them feel lesser, or that they need to be policed more than their counterparts. And having the basis of the regulation be founded on Polaris, which is a seemingly corrupt institution where they take money from hotels and ExxonMobil and Chase Bank, and that just screams red flags to me, especially when you have conflicting data from Amnesty International and other human rights groups that are saying otherwise. So, I think it's incredibly mindful to, you know, consider the source and to consider how this would end up being enforced, which would not go against our comprehensive plan, would not go against our ethic, and I would really encourage y'all to not support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Am I supposed to sign in?
Yes, please, and state your name, please.
Eric Brush. Sorry, Eric Brush. I'm a massage therapist here in Iowa City. I have been since 2001. I got to tell you, I went to one of the meetings, and I came here tonight loaded for bear and make you guys not adopt this proposal. But I had a chance to talk with some wonderful city employees outside, and the way they explained it to me makes a tremendous amount of sense. I'm like you, Mr. Cole. You come to me and you ask me questions, yeah, I don't need to talk to you. But this isn't about the individual, this is about the business. When you're talking about commerce, governments have the right to regulate the commerce. So, what they're proposing in this proposal, and I stipulated at the meeting, if I don't like what you guys are going to be putting out here, I'm no longer a massage therapist. I'm going to move on to something else that I don't have to pay to work in this state, because if you carry a license, you have to pay to work in this state, and some of these communities are making you pay to work in their city. I wasn't going to stand for that, but that isn't included in this particular proposal. This proposal, as it was explained to me, was designed to give law enforcement an extra tool to go and help those that are in need and to stamp out the illicit side of massage. I don't like being targeted. I don't like being in the crosshairs, which is exactly how I feel, but I'm all about giving the police the extra help that they need in order to be able to do their job, even if that means that I've got to have an extra burden. Now, I work out of my home, and I filled out the home occupancy permit, which then basically registers me with the city, and if there's a complaint, there's a permit that's on file. The city knows me, the city, or knows that the permit is there, they can look it up, they can check that I still have a license with the state. That's all on the state database. This isn't exempting me from this type of scrutiny. If there's a complaint, the city's going, even though I'm registered and have my permit, the city's still going to take a look at it, and if there's more than one complaint, they're going to show up at my house, and they're going to want to see. There are some exempted things in this ordinance, but this isn't a matter of whether or not you work in a hospital or a doctor's office, this is the, or even in a house, because I could easily run a brothel out of my home just as easily as I could in a commercial location. In fact, it'd probably be a lot easier for me to do it out of my home, because bedrooms already exist. This allows, this ordinance allows the city to try to find those that are in need and do it in a way that it doesn't really affect those of us that are doing it legally, other than, "Do you have this paperwork? No, I don't. I didn't know I needed it." "All right, here's where you need to go. Fill out the paperwork. We'll be back in 24 to 48 hours to check. You got the paperwork? No, no, I don't." There goes the placard. This isn't a Gestapo tactic, from what I'm seeing, and like I said, I was ready to convince you guys not to do this, but the way, the way that it's been explained to me outside, I'm all for this. I think you guys should really consider moving forward and approving this.
Great. Thanks, Eric. Is there anyone else who would like to address this? Okay, we were engaged in council discussion. Anybody else want to say anything? Okay, if not, roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Rod Martin?
Yes. Motion carries. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Mims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item 10, Assessment Schedule. This is a resolution adopting an assessment schedule of unpaid mowing, cleanup of property, snow removal, sidewalk repair, and stop box repair charges, and directing the clerk to certify the same to the Johnson County Treasurer for collection in the same manner as property taxes. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Sully, seconded by Mims. Discussion.
Look like we have any property owners here, so.
Apparently not. Hearing no discussion. Roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Taylor?
Here.
Yes. Thomas?
Yes.
Rod Martin?
Here.
Cole?
Yes.
That reminds me of being in high school or whatever.
Four yeses and two hers.
Trying to respond differently from everybody else. Okay, item 11, Announcement of Vacancies. We have a new vacancy at the Senior Center Commission. We have one vacancy to fill, an unexpired term, plus a three-year term upon appointment until December 31, 2021. And applications for this position must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, September 11 of this year. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
Moved.
Moved by Cole, seconded by Sully. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right. We have previously announced vacancies. One vacancy to fill, an unexpired term upon appointment, to the Community Police Review Board. One vacancy to fill, an unexpired term upon appointment, to the Library Board of Trustees. Applications for those positions must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, August 14 of this year. We also have vacancies on the Airport Commission, Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, Historic Preservation Commission for College Street District, Historic Preservation Commission for the Jefferson Street District, and the Telecommunications Commission. Vacancies on those, those vacancies will remain open until filled. Item 12, Community Comment. I see Austin had to leave. Item 13, City Council Information. Susan, could we start with you, please, and go to your left?
Sure. It was mentioned earlier tonight that Tracy Akenbach is leaving the Johnson County Housing Trust Fund. There is a goodbye reception for her tomorrow at 4:30 at Midwest One Bank at?
Where?
500 South Clinton. Midwest One's new bank, not the one right downtown, but the, I think it's 500 South Clinton or something like that. So, that's tomorrow, and that's it. It's getting late. 4:30.
True enough. I lost it, I bet with my wife.
I have a couple of under-pending work session topics, a couple of items. One important, both important, but of different levels of importance, I guess you might say. The first is, relates to the Emerald Ash Borer. We have, as I think some of you know, not all of us, the Emerald Ash Borer is here. It's, you know, it's affected us, some ash trees in the downtown were infected and had to be removed. Trees are being removed. There's a contract to remove dozens of ash trees in Iowa City, and it came to my attention that, you know, currently, our policy is not to use chemical treatments, but to wait until we see signs of decline before we remove the tree. And what I've learned in the last week is that it appears, or at least there's evidence that the science on chemical treatment has advanced to the point where chemical treatment may actually be an option, both in terms of its effectiveness and also the cost of doing the application. And so, what I would like council to consider would be scheduling as soon as we can, because this is kind of a dynamic situation, a work session where we discuss this. I've talked with Jeff. Jeff is looking into with staff the, you know, this information relating to the effectiveness and viability of the chemical treatment and how that may or may not affect our procedures as we address this issue, which, you know, we did review this, what, a couple of years ago. I don't think at that time, we had, at least I didn't have an understanding of the scale or the scope of the number of ash trees that we have in Iowa City and the impact of what would eventually mean the, you know, the loss of all ash trees. So, I think it's certainly worthwhile to look at whether this chemical treatment, which is a trunk injection, may provide an alternative, so we can at least choose and elect whether certain trees, you know, should be treated and survive as a result of that treatment.
Yeah, I'm willing to talk about.
Yeah, me, too.
I am, too.
Save them, great. Certainly before, it didn't sound like the cost or efficacy was there to make it worth it, so if that's changed.
There are certain trees that are lined with ash trees, so if we lose them all.
Yeah, I know, is part of Davenport Street's going to get hammered, yeah.
So, there's that. So, that's a major deal. And then, I also heard from the Project Green, you know, they're having their 50th anniversary, and they asked if council would consider nominating or choosing the Black Eyed Susan Rudbeckia species as the official flower of Iowa City.
Sure, why not?
So, I, you know, I don't know what the procedure.
What are the alternative flowers?
Yeah, right. What about the other flowers? I mean, come on.
I don't know. I'm sort of inclined to, you know, select Columbine myself, but anyway, I told Jen Wagner, who's one of my neighbors, who floated this idea with me, that I would bring it forth and see what y'all thought.
Don't we need a work session on that? This is a big issue. I'm sorry, okay, you're actually requesting.
I said, one was, you know, that the UAB is a major deal. This is, you know, kind of a fun thing if we wish to consider it.
Yeah, who's going to get irritated by it?
Black Eyed Susan is a, you know, for what it's worth, when I first came to the Midwest from California, Black Eyed Susans did jump out at me, you know, as a kind of a character-defining flower in the Midwest. And then, you also have the color aspect of it as it pertains to the Hawkeye State, so, you know, there are all kinds of ways this can tie in. So, anyway, I thought I would, I told her I would, Jen, I would bring this forth and see where it goes.
I would support a work session, but less than 10 minutes.
Less than five.
Yeah, the only thing I'd be curious about is whether there might be somebody out there who has good reason to suggest a different flower if we choose to go in this direction. I'm a fan of flowers. Black Eyed Susans are beautiful. I have no objection to it, but you know.
Yeah. Hence the.
Could be controversial, after all.
You know, I think, I think what would, if we, if we give the go-ahead, this would be an opportunity for Project Green to jump in and campaign, you know, develop some effort behind it to indeed verify.
Maybe they could be asked to explain why they recommend that flower rather than any other flower.
That's what I mean, yeah. The proof will be in the process that it's a good idea.
Yeah. All right. Is that it, John?
That's it.
Rockney?
I have a few events to announce. First of all, I have no idea what Comic-Con is, but I do know that the library, the Iowa City Public Library, August 11, 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, is going to have their first-ever LibCon at the Iowa City Public Library, and so I know that some people are really into that particular thing, so I really encourage them to check it out. The library has been doing a lot of incredible things in STEAM and other areas that you wouldn't necessarily associate with the library, and every event that they've done has been really fabulous, so I encourage people to check that out. I want to remind people about Midwest One is doing their Rock the Chalk. That returns Friday, August 10, 2018. It begins at 10 o'clock AM. Check out Midwest One for that. I think that sounds like a fantastic late-summer event. Everyone on this council loves our Iowa City Parks. I want to remind a few people about some events in some of our various parks. Wednesday, August 8, 2018, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. There's a Kids Day with Public Safety at Upper City Park, and I guess you get a free donut and beverage while they meet with law enforcement, so it sounds like a terrific opportunity. Maybe John would like.
Be trained to be law enforcement people.
Maybe, could be, and maybe John would like to go to that one. The other, we continue to have our parties in the park, and I still haven't been to one yet this year, so maybe I should go to this one. The next one is at Reno Park, and Reno, I have to say, that's one of my. The next one is at Reno Park, and Reno, I have to say, that's one of my favorite parks. I love Reno Park. I think that's one of the most beautiful ones. And that takes place Thursday, August 9th, 2018, from 6:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. So I think that should be a real fun event, and I encourage people to check out our Iowa City, our Community Garden in Reno Park. That seems to have been very successful. One of the things we have not talked a lot about is what a terrific job our Parks Rec staff has done in really accelerating our garden, our community garden progress. We've really added a lot of community gardens, and I think our staff, and that's not easy to do, and our staff has done a terrific job. Finally, I want to confirm that I did survive RagBri. I did two days from Ames to Newton and Newton to Sigourney. All of you out there, if you've ever had the app, do RagBri. It is so much fun. It is great exercise. You meet people from throughout the world, and it's people of all ages. One thing I did not know, the median age in RagBri is 55 years old. So I was actually one of the younger ones, although you do see some eight, nine-year-olds. So you do need to train. I did probably, you know, five to seven times of 20 miles or more. If you do the whole thing, you need to do a lot more than that, so. But I didn't need the SAG, which I was very proud of myself, and I survived, so. And I also want to remind people what an awesome state we live in, just to see all our beautiful small towns. It's a real, real opportunity. And of course, our staff did a wonderful job once it went into Iowa City, but I was not here because I had to be in another location.
Our staff and volunteers did a superb job, and I really want to praise Jeff for the snap, staff chat letter, and maybe, I can't remember if it was a press release also that you wrote to our staff. Yeah, it was a really terrific piece. Jeff, thanks for doing it. But I also want to note, you're bragging a lot. I must brag that I rode two miles on RagBri from McCallister Boulevard to downtown.
Oh, hey. Better than nothing. I did 140, so how about that?
All right, Maz?
No, I don't have any.
Okay.
I just came and tried to.
Good to, good to see you back.
Incidentally, welcome back.
Welcome back.
Boeing?
I was going to comment on RagBri also. I spent some time out at Terry True Blood watching all of the bikers come in, and I, I was looking for you guys. Don't want to steal your thunder, but it seemed like a wonderful event, met some wonderful people. This young couple stopped on the side of the road to take their picture by the Welcome to Iowa City sign, and, and they, I, they were taking pictures, so I offered to take their group picture, and they said that their daughter was a student here on a soccer scholarship, and so they were stopping in Iowa City. That was the end, but they had done the entire rest of it, never done RagBri before. They loved the state there from Michigan, and it was just really great to see those kinds of people. And then I thought the Friday night event went, went really well. People seemed behaving themselves, and thank you to all the volunteers. There were 1800 volunteers all around with their blue shirts on, and, and it was just a, I think, a really great event, and I think we really showcased Iowa City in, in a great way because people loved it, people from outside that hadn't been to Iowa City before. So that was good. That was good to see. And on those lines, and Friday night concert was actually on Saturday night, which was my favorite group, The Feds, but that was fun, and went to my first movie on the Pendergrass, Saturday Night Movie on the Pendergrass. That's also fun. So there's a lot of fun, great things to do in Iowa City in the summer and still out there to do. Also went to the Prairie Hill Open House. I think Jim was there and, and John, and congratulations to them. It's, it's a wonderful, beautiful development, the, the different homes, kind of as close to missing middle as, as we can get so far, and the folks that are living in there already are, seem happy, and it's beautiful, and I encourage people to still go out there and, and take a look. So that was good. Let's see here. That's, that's, that's about it.
Good deal. I want to mention a couple or three things. With regard to RagBri, I had the pleasure of sharing a beer with a city councilwoman from Homer, Alaska.
You did connect.
Yeah, yeah, I did connect with her, and I talked with her and her husband, Wayne, and we had a great time, and she was, she loved being on RagBri, he did, too, and they just had nothing but good to say about Iowa City and the way we rolled things out for them. So it was really fun to do that. Also, I want to let you know that several days ago, John, John Simon and I had a really fruitful discussion with Kelly Hayworth and Tom Gill from Corleville about the proposed widening of I-380. You might remember I invited, we invited various people, you know, the leaders from the county and our adjacent cities and other small towns to discuss the draft letter that I'd written. And for one reason or another, all the other people could not come, but we did meet with Kelly and Tom, and that, I thought, was a very fruitful and interesting discussion. And it seemed to me we had a lot more in common than one might just kind of think off, off the top of one's head. So I was very pleased with that. I've asked Jeff to read through the revised draft of the letter. I tinkered with it some to account for the conversation with Tom and Kelly, and so I don't know if you've had a chance to.
Yeah, both Kent and I looked at it, and we're, we're fine with it.
So, okay, well, we can take care of that tomorrow morning, I guess, and so, just wanted to let you know where things stand on that. Also want to congratulate Latasha Deloche upon her appointment as Director of the, of the Senior Center. Yeah, so you're not here, Latasha, maybe you're on TV, watching on TV, but, you know, welcome aboard. And beyond that, I'm just going to stop. Jeff?
I think I'll pass. Thanks.
I have one thing.
Yeah?
We had a really successful chip-in event yesterday evening here at City Hall, invitation for some priority setting as we approach budget season, and so we had a really fabulous turnout. We really appreciate the people who participated in person, and the online response so far to our news item has been quite overwhelming, so we'll be summarizing and providing you feedback from the public at the next meeting.
Approximately how many?
The public turnout or the online turnout?
Public turnout.
Public turnout was about 50.
Oh, wow.
So we filled this room, and there, there were lots of comments and really good engagement between staff and the public with lots of questions, and as of this afternoon, we were upwards of 300 survey responses, so we've got a lot of information for you.
Now what?
Yeah. The survey's open for another week, so we'll see what kind of work they have cut out for me.
I'm looking forward to looking, just viewing that video that is now available of.
Yes, so the presentation that we made last night, providing some guidance as to budget basics, is available for people, so it's about maybe 15 minutes.
Perfect. That's great.
And after the presentation, people could put their chips in the jars, and they stayed around for another good half hour to 45 minutes, visiting with each other and staff members. It was, it was a really, yeah, it was a really good event. It was packed in here. It was good.
Yeah. I was worried that you wouldn't get a good turnout because it's August 6th, you know, but I was glad that you did.
Owner?
Yep.
Kelly? Okay, so now we need to, we need a motion to adjourn to the work session. Any set up?
Moved.
Second.
Moved by Sollee, seconded by Cole. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We are done with the formal meeting.